Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, August 26th, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Next, if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, sitting with the board tonight is the Mashpee Town Council, Pat Costello. Attorney Costello joins us tonight from his office in Boston to give the board some guidance on the proposed medical marijuana dispensary planned for 29 Echo Road. In an effort to save Pat some time and the town some money, the ZBA has chosen to arrange, rearrange, tonight's agenda to move 29 Echo Road to tonight's first hearing. And sitting on the first hearing will be the five regular board members.
Read it in?
No, not yet. He's up.
Awesome. It's a different...
Exactly, so you want one of those, and I think that does you. I think that makes it complete, correct?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Okay, pass it down. You want to move your poller, please?
Hello?
Good evening.
Yes?
Haven't opened it up.
Scott, would you read the first here?
29 Echo Road Triple M Management Company LLC requests a special permit under Section 174-24-J to construct a 1,500-square-foot plus-or-minus building to utilize, to be utilized as a medical marijuana treatment center on property located in I-1 zoning district, map 19, parcel 3, extension 9, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mark Gilde. I'm a lawyer here in Mashpee, offices at 33 Braich Echo Road South. I represent the applicant for a special permit for a medical marijuana facility currently located at 29 Echo Road. With me is the hospital manager, Dr. John Power, local consultant, the engineer for the facility. Prior to appearing before your board tonight, we have met with the police department, we reviewed our plan for them, and received their approval. We have been through design review, plan review, and received favorable recommendation. We have met with the board of selection, and have received a favorable vote relative to a host community agreement. Meeting from your own bylaw. By vote at the state election on November 6, 2012, voters of the Commonwealth approved question 3, operating legislation regulating the cultivation, distribution, possession, use of marijuana for medical purposes, and establishment of medical marijuana treatment centers. This law became effective in January of 2013. In 2013, your town meeting adopted a bylaw that allows a medical marijuana facility as a special community use in I-1 zone. 29 Echo Road is in an I-1 zone. Section 174-24-J of your bylaws sets forth the standards that apply to the application for approval. Our application, I would suggest, you meets those standards. I know that the subject matter of the business that we're before you on can be considered sensational and generally can result in headlines, but the application that is before you is nothing more than a request for allowable use for a business in operation, a nonprofit entity, to come to Mashpee and to serve a need of our society that the Commonwealth in this town has deserved, has decided is deserving of being served. Our operation is a small operation. As you can see from the building, it's only 1,500 square feet. We will have approximately seven employees on site. Two of those will be security personnel. Initially, the facility will only be open in limited hours. Initially, patients will be seen by appointment only. Above 15 appointments per day, there will not be intense use of the property at this time. We ultimately will be open six days a week. We don't believe this is an issue given the zone that the facility is in and the location of this property. If you're familiar with it, obviously, there's a plumbing store in front of it. Somewhere across the street is a SBI beverage facility. Down the end of the street, there's some land that's available for development, but it's mostly industrial uses. Even when there are an increase in our operations, there is not expected to be any issues with respect to traffic, as this is one of two facilities that will be licensed on Cape Cod. There is a state-approved project proposed in Dennis that is well in progress at this time as well. This is going to be a small, low-key, well-run operation. In addition to the on-site staff, the applicant has a director of security, who is an retired state police officer, who has met with the town officials and reviewed the security plans. There's a chief operating officer, there's a compliance officer, and there's a medical director. The project has been designed from a perspective of safety. Safety for Mashpee, safety for patients, and safety for employees of the dispensary. The applicant has provided a detailed security plan that has been reviewed by the police department and has been approved. I'd like briefly to review the plan with you tonight. As you can see, there's a fence around the entire property. There is a fence on the inside of the property here as well. There is proposed to be a security booth here that would be manned when the facility is open, and the project has been designed such that as patients that drive up will come in, will have to have their card checked at the security gate, and if they don't have the appropriate authenticated documents, they will be turned away, and this armed gate will not open. They will not be allowed access unless they produce the appropriate documentation. Once they come in, there are parking areas here and here for the applicants. You'll see that there's a segregation of parking between employee parking and patient parking. Again, that's for purposes of safety and for purposes of protecting both the employees as well as the patients that come here. You will note that the property is somewhat devoid of a lot of landscaping, and that's as a result of the regulations that require there be a distance of 50 feet unimpeded so that someone can't hide behind some landscaping and surprise the patients and/or the employees that work there. We meet or exceed all of the front, inside, set-back, front side, rear set-backs, with the exception of the guardhouse for which we're asking a variance. We are asking for a front yard setback variance on that issue. The four plans have been shared with you, and the four plans are designed to comply with both the town regulations and the state regulations. There are several areas that the product to be selected. There are patient waiting areas, and you'll know when you walk in, there's a security area, and at that front desk, there will be a security guard who will then have to check the essentials and make sure that people deserve to be there, and thereafter, they will be sent through the facility. Back to the overnight storage, there will be no overnight storage of product and/or money. That's again, from a security perspective, that at this point in time, they don't want to have anything on there. If our plans change, we made an agreement with the board's weapon, that we will come back and discuss that issue again. You will note that the parking, the bylaw for parking requires 10 parking spaces, including 1 ADA accessible spaces. We have provided 21 spaces, including 4 ADA accessible spaces. The reasons for the additional spaces are as follows. One, whereas there's a requirement for 1 ADA space, we have provided 4, given the needs of the patients that are expected to use the facility. Secondly, due to the segregation of parking for employees and for patients, there is a need for additional parking. And finally, the zoning parking requirements are based upon square footage, and they don't really take into consideration the fact that we're going to have 2 security personnel on site, and we need additional space for those individuals. I would ask Rahul to review with the board if he could the issues relative to drainage as well as the issues of the application.
Good evening, for the record, Rahul Dishardi from Holmes McGrath. I've been reviewing the drainage system with Charlie Rowley, consulting engineer for the town. The site has been split into three drainage areas. We have a drainage area in front that collects into this drainage basin. There's also a subsurface drainage system. There's a second area in this location, collected in this drain basin, and there's a third section in the backside, collecting in this section. All three of them have the same cross-section. It's a 2-foot swell. It's not too deep. The subsurface leaching is composed of two galleys with crushed stone and a dome grate, so when water runs through the paved waterways, gets into the drainage basin, and then it goes into the system underneath. The systems are designed for the 100-year storm because we don't know what the existing drainage on Echo Road was designed. We do not want to exceed anything that's currently happening from the site. Currently, the site slopes this way, so the current conditions does not provide any runoff onto Echo Road. So to prove that the 100-year storm does not exceed what currently happens, we designed the system for the 100-year storm. The septic system is proposed on the back of the property. We have two leaching fields. The town of Mashpee requires that any construction for commercial use installs both the primary or, and the reserve area. We're doing that here. The system for a 1,500-square-foot building for retail is technically 75 gallons a day, but Title V puts a limitation that it cannot be less than 200 gallons a day. So even if this retail building currently proposed at 1,500, if it was a building that was 4,000 square feet, the septic system will be the same size because the limit factor is the one that dominates. But we're still proposing the two septic systems, the two leaching systems, the primary and the reserve, and what they have to do is every two years or every year, they rotate and use one and the other. If there's any questions for that, I'll be happy to answer later.
Thank you, Rahul. What we are asking the board to do tonight is to grant a variance from the setback requirements so as to allow the security group to enforce the security of this operation. Secondly, we're asking pursuant to Section 174-39 of the bylaw, for this board to approve the additional parking shown on the plan. And finally, we're asking this board to grant a special permit under 174-24-J of the bylaw. We are happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your time.
First question is probably for Rahul, and it's regarding Charlie's letter dated August 25th, and there's four points that I think you did receive. I'm asking, where does this stand on these four points?
Didn't see that letter. Where'd you get that one? I didn't get that one.
It's in the McGrath's. Responding to...
It's in his, it's in his package.
Oh, in that package, yeah.
Yes, I'm actually grateful that Charlie took his time last night to review my revisions to the plans. Subsequent to his second review, he addressed some of the revisions or some of the details. His last letter on item 1, it says, "Item 3 indicates that the under-drain inlet on the drainage basins are to be set bottom grade," but the detail on sheet 3 still shows that it's 12-inch high. There was an oversight on the detail, I believe on sheet 3, there's one detail that still showed that the grade was 12 inches from the bottom of the basin. That detail has since been revised, and it's shown that it had to base the basin, so that detail is...
If I could stop for... We normally, though, get a letter stating that everything is, he's been satisfied, from Charlie.
Okay, well, it's, this is dated the 25th, yesterday.
Yeah. My point is, though, we, as one person on the board, it's not my job to make sure that number one was, was dealt with and handled. I'm looking for a piece of paper from Charlie saying that I'm now satisfied and, and everything's all set. Do we have anything like that?
This is the last letter I saw from Charlie.
This letter we're talking about here, right? So, and these are your answers right here, right?
Those are the prior answers.
So you haven't dealt with these yet?
Other than the revisions that we submitted this morning to the ZBA, no.
Oh, okay. Because ultimately, usually, well, in every case we've ever dealt with, Charlie has sent us a letter saying, back and forth, back and forth, or whatever it takes, "I'm now happy with the plans and I'm satisfied," and we don't have that as of yet.
No, what's this here? You got, from Charlie Rowley on August 25th.
Okay.
"I reviewed the response letter from Home..."
Yes, yes.
So he's reviewed, but he's got four line items.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying, and those...
Charlie's got a letter from the 24th, too.
Right. I'm just saying, I just, also, we want to have a letter from our consulting engineer saying that "I'm happy with the design, it meets my criteria and general engineering practices and..."
Mr. Chairman, can I address that?
Sure.
The item number 23 and 4, still talks about the minimum length of grasscutting in the drainage basin. It certainly should make a condition. 3, it says it recommended that 1.5-inch to 3-inch stone be used to fill some larger boards, which we certainly can look at as... And number 2 is just a convention that appears to be out of place, and he asks that the convention arrows need some adjustment.
Okay, and that can be fixed?
And even item number 1, which is the under-drain drain to be flushed with the basin to protect the condition, he was...
Yeah, I don't have any problem conditioning all of these. So we'd need to see a plan where it's all said and done, that's approved by Charlie, and something, as Ron said, something in writing saying, "I'm happy with the way it is."
Right, in other words, not just, you know, the four, the statement would be as false, as far as I'm concerned, that satisfaction from the town engineer in the way of a, you know, a signed plan and a document saying he's satisfied, whether it's four, five, six, or seven comments. I mean, I'm okay with that.
It does say in the last paragraph here that these adjustments, he recommends approval.
Right.
So he apparently didn't intend the whole list back.
Yeah, and I think we can get through it. I'm not, I'm not saying that we, as one person, that I'm, that I'm, you know, against the whole project. I'm just saying that I think it's important that the town engineer or town consulting engineer states "I'm satisfied" prior to maybe Mike issuing a building permit or something.
Mike has a comment.
Yeah.
Basically, through the chairs, the members of the board, we can also, as we stated, is make that a condition that prior to me issuing a building permit, that I get a letter of acceptance from Charlie after these items have been addressed. That way, we know it's been done, and if Charlie's not satisfied, then the project doesn't move any further.
Stay open until it's happened.
Yeah, until it's happened.
And any other... It's somewhat of a concern from, passing concern from board health, and it says, "I'm wondering if the reception desk/room was a secure room. There is a door that is accessible by the public at the rear of the room. The waiting area and the dispensary area are connected by a hallway that has a door, excuse me, that has the door access to the rear of the reception room."
Is that in the comments, or...
No, that was something he just came to us with.
Well, I think we can address that. If they're talking about the door at the rear of the front desk, which I think might be number 11.
That's correct.
It's lockable from the interior. All these doors are lockable, and you can lock. If you see the waiting area?
Yep.
In order for them to get into the, even to the restroom area, the front desk is going to have to get them in there. In order for them to get into the dispensary, the front desk is going to have to lock.
I think his main concern is, once somebody's in the dispensary, and let's say somebody leaves that door, walks out that door, somebody could run in and buzz people in, and that was his concern, so I brought it up.
If there's any concern, we can tell them that there could be a security guard inside that front desk.
Okay. I have a question. I don't know if it's either Mike or Pat. Has someone looked specifically at the rules and regulations that have been promulgated by the state of Massachusetts and gone down and can say to us as a board, in our novice knowledge, that they seem to have been met, or they have been met?
On my end, I can say yes. Since the meeting with the file review, they addressed most of the bullet points. The only one that's really left hanging, which to me is kind of a minor one, which deals with the question about signage.
Right. The question of signage, I think originally they were going to be lettering on that sign, but the logo will only be on the sign front, and that is allowed by the state regulations.
That's right.
There are limitations to lighting of that sign that will comply with...
Well, I guess...
Those limitations are set forth in the state regulations.
They'll be, they'll be in the conditions.
I'm just bringing up is what one of the board members mentioned about the fact that they weren't, I guess the law was written that you couldn't use the word, you know, marijuana, but it was a catch-22 sort of deal, which I understand. I don't see a problem with it, I'm just saying, one of the members raised it, and we were waiting for...
At design review.
Right, and I never heard anything more on that.
Do they need to obtain further permission, permitting for that sign, or is that part of...
It's changed, isn't it?
It's been changed.
So it's really just the letter M, isn't it? That's what it looks like.
A logo, but you can call it what you like.
Yeah, no, I've seen it.
But is the sign part of the application that's been, or prior approved?
No, no, the question was, is, was the fact of the use of word, which was said marijuana...
Marijuana.
And one of the members on the committee was saying, "I thought you couldn't be advertising the product even though it was part of their name, so like I said, so it was like a catch-22."
Right.
So they asked us to look into it, which we did, and although we were compliant in the state regulations, to remove any ambiguity, we changed the sign to just have a log. They addressed their concern.
And I have no more issues.
So it's your opinion that we're there?
We're good.
This was the change right here that we're talking about?
Right.
Gotcha, thank you. In that design review meeting, there were a number of different areas of concern, most of which have been answered, taken care of. One of them was potential queuing of traffic on Echo Road, and it was brought up that... If there was any queuing that did occur, that you would have to come back to the design review, if you remember that.
Department, Department had a public work raise.
Correct.
We agree that we will return and deal with design review if Mr. Menloes identifies that as an issue in the future.
So that'll be a condition.
That'll be in the conditions.
What's, what's the... You'll, you'll see it when you read it in. I've got it written up.
Mark, on the, on the traffic issue, you said something, I think, I think, expected 15 treatments a day at the, at the outset. Where do you get that kind of number? I mean, theoretically, it's going to serve half the Cape.
That's a small number based upon the initial limited operation at the facility, but even with an increased operation, it's not like this is a Dunkin' Donuts where people are driving in on a continuous basis. We're, we're going to seek initially to have appointments so we know when people will be there. And in the future, even if we don't have appointments, the size of the operation, the intensity of the use is not so great that there would be any effect on, on traffic in that area.
Do you have a sense how long a treatment lasts, on average?
The initial patient that comes in the first time spends about 30 minutes in the facility, and subsequent visits are...
Grab that mic.
Are less than 10 minutes.
I'm sorry, if you would, your name.
Jonathan Hurley. The initial visit for a patient, you know, based on analysis from Colorado, is 30 minutes, and then subsequent visits are under 10 minutes. And then the population, it's two, roughly 2% of the Cape population would qualify for medical marijuana, so you take the 250,000 residents, and that's the number of patients you have.
What is your pro forma based on? Ultimately, trips per day of, there's got to be a pro forma that says it makes sense for you.
Yeah, I mean, the way that we came up with the 15 per day was taking that 2% of the Cape population, looking at this area, and then determining how many would come in per day on a six, on a, being open six days a week.
So that's for the entire Cape, but once...
Once Dennis opens.
Once Dennis opens, that's...
Orleans opens.
Potentially cut in half.
Yeah.
Is there a third one planned?
Orleans has been approved by the state, an applicant.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And a person under this treatment comes in once a day, once a week, once a year?
Typically, they come in once a week. They purchase it, and then they leave.
So that's it?
So no treatment's on the site.
There, they just get the product and leave it.
No treatment's on site.
So it's home administration, in theory.
Absolutely, yes.
So when you say treatment, it's just the receiving of the marijuana, whatever, or in whatever form, and then they leave?
And then...
And use it somewhere else?
Correct.
Nice.
Yeah, typically, they use it at home.
So why is the first one, is it selection process? Is the first one longer than the other ones?
Just to figure out, I mean, they come in, talk about their ailments, what type of problems they have, then via patient education, you can talk to them about the different strains of medical marijuana to find out what, you know, we know enough now from Colorado what works and doesn't work for different conditions. And basically, there's THC in marijuana and CBD. You take out the THC, which is the psychedelic effect that people get high on, and you leave it with just CBD in it, and that's what most patients with conditions want, you know, to help stimulate eating or take care of joint pain and things like that.
Can you opt to have it left in?
Oh, yes.
You can?
Yes.
So on, now, is that...
I guess, yeah.
That's going too far.
Between the doctor and the patient.
I understand, that's what I'm saying. Doesn't get to us. I was just trying, I'd have a conversation with a later day somewhere else.
We'll send you some information.
No, it's okay.
I got a question on the, I got a question on the gate, the security booth. It might have been brought up. It seems awful close to the road, and there's another gate, slide gate at the security booth?
We will raise that issue when another role will address it.
I'm just thinking about backup with vehicles if, like, three people show up at the same time.
Yeah, the security booth is 3 feet into the property line, but it is still about 15 feet from the edge of Echo Road.
Rahul, grab the mic if you would. Thank you.
But there is a gate there, a sliding gate.
This is the gate to enclose the entire property when nothing is operational.
Okay.
So this is just a sliding gate.
So that's open during the day?
This gate is open when, when it's open. So the first car comes up to the booth, and then this is the gate that the security personnel will operate.
So if two or three people come, they can back up? They're not going to be backing out into the road?
We're not, we're not allowing, or we don't want them to back out. We want them to go around this way if they get denied access.
I'm saying if two, say, someone's at the security booth getting checked in, another car pulls in behind them, say, three people show up at the same time, is that third car going to be on Echo Road?
Yes.
Because they're sitting at the booth.
He's worried about stacking.
That's what we're talking about, the queuing.
That's why, that's why, that's been brought up, and that's been addressed.
Correct.
Okay, that was my only...
So now, let's talk about what you're looking for, for a variance in reference to this building.
We'll probably raise that issue and then have Rob address it, because he could be calculating.
I'm just thinking about backup with vehicles if like three people show up at the same time.
Yeah, the security booth is three feet into the property line.
Mm-hmm.
But it is still about 15 feet from the edge of Echo Road.
Okay. I'll grab the mic if you would. Thank you.
But there is a gate there, a sliding gate.
This is the gate to enclose the entire property when nothing is operational.
Okay.
So, this is just a sliding gate.
So, that's open during the day?
This gate is open when, when it's open. So, the first car comes up to the booth, and then this is the gate that the security personnel will operate.
So, if two or three people come, they can back up, they're not going to be backing out into the road?
I think you scroll on that.
We're not, we're not allowing, or we don't want them to back out. We want them to go around this way if they get denied access.
I'm saying if two, say, someone's at the security booth getting checked in, another car pulls in behind them, say, three people show up at the same time, is that third car going to be on Echo Road?
Yes.
Because they're sitting at the booth.
Yes.
He's worried about stacking.
That's what we're talking about, the queuing.
That's why, that's what was, that's been brought up, and that's been addressed.
Correct.
Okay. That was my only.
So, now let's talk about what you're looking for, for variance in reference to this building. What's the number? Did you say three or 15?
It's three feet from the property line.
So, it's three, so the minimum front yard setback is 75, so you're looking for a 72-foot variance?
Yes, we are.
Not a big building.
No, no, yeah, but, big number.
The size of the lot.
I know.
It is a big number, but the size of the lot doesn't allow for that.
Totally understand.
What other security booths are normally in town?
I believe it's safe.
I think, yeah, I mean, it's an entrance, I mean, that's where-
Still one at your place.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, I don't even know.
You need it closed so that somebody being turned away can go around and out rather than try and back up.
It's not a large structure.
Which leads to my next question. What happens if a, let's say, a truck pulls up and gets turned away?
What's the sound?
Is the turning radius able to accommodate some kind of a truck?
It's a pickup truck. It's designed that it can take a pickup truck. But if a patient shows up in a box truck?
Yeah. I mean, there's no question, I think, that you could have a stacking problem if you had three people come at the same time.
Yes.
That you could have them stacked into Echo Road.
That's why we agreed to go back and talk to design review, which in fact, that's identified.
And it's conditioned on that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I've experienced that on some things that I've done in my life, and stacking can happen pretty quickly.
That's what I was comparing.
Excepting the intensity of the noise is not that great.
But I'm still trying to understand, 15 visits per day is what your pro forma, correct me if I'm wrong, was based on, and those 15 visits per day, I'm just trying to understand the 15 visits, I'm not, is what your business plan was based on, is that correct?
That's what I was talking about.
Just seems like a small number in order to, and I'm, and I'm trying to, I'm worried about stacking, and that's what I'm trying to get to. When you say 15, I say I'm less worried about stacking, but I, but as a businessman, I'm hoping to have 45 a day, and 15 is where my minimum break even or something is, and if you're trying to get 45, then stacking is a real issue.
Even if you had 45 over an eight-hour period, which is six and a half-
But if they all come at lunchtime, because they're out of work for an hour.
Come by appointment in the beginning.
Yeah. All right, well, listen.
We're going to try and stay, you know, we're going to have to be open early because people have to go to work.
People can't just show up without an appointment, so an appointment has to be set.
Well, that's good, then, I see.
So, you can't have, you're going to have, probably when it first opens, I assume, people just driving up going, hey, how do I get an appointment?
Well, that's good, then, and that should alleviate most of the stacking, then. Because I presume, if you were, if you were to guess today, the appointment's every half hour, 15 minutes, hour, what's, I mean, at 15, it'd be every half hour, 15 minutes?
Initially, we, I mean, the whole state, you know, on the DPH website right now, has 20,000 registered patients.
Right.
So, it's, because it's taken so long to get to this point at the state level, patients aren't spending the money to get the certificate and pay the state for their certificate card until there's more than one or two dispensaries open. So, the process has been very slow. And just like a doctor's office, you know, typical doctor's office will see 25, 100 patients a day, but typically, they're seeing 40, you know, every 15 minutes, so four to five an hour.
Right.
And the patient doesn't want to wait, so they want to make their appointment so they can come in, do what they need to do, and leave.
I'm far less concerned about stacking at this point, then. Yeah, and that was addressed-
I thought that was an operating gate, that every time someone came in, but now I realize it's just a gate that opens up when the facility opens.
In the daytime.
So, now you can get another vehicle.
Right, yeah. And, and the fact that they have a-
I just saw a slide gate, so I thought maybe it was operated.
That makes some sense.
And that was very, very comprehensively discussed at the design review meeting, and I know they've agreed, and it will be conditioned in our, in our ruling tonight, that if it does become an issue, any kind of traffic issue or public safety issue, they will have to come back to the design review committee to address it. We will condition any ruling tonight based on that, too.
So, if a town resident came to Mike and-
If the police dean did a public safety issue, they would inform the applicant, and the applicant would be told to come back to design review to remedy the situation. That's my understanding.
And does town council feel that that's appropriate, that can be a condition that has the ability for them to, once they're in business, to change a plan or something of that nature? We can make them do that?
Yes, I believe that the determination as to whether it becomes an issue would be up to the building inspector and/or police department, those who have jurisdiction over the way. That was, that issue was discussed at length at the design plan review committee meeting, and they were satisfied that if, in fact, the issue did arise, and the applicant was willing to come back and address it, that alternative measures could be worked out.
All right. But it's no longer if he's willing, it's part, if it's part of the permit, he has to.
It's going to be, I would suggest that the board-
Michael make the call, or Catherine.
I see. And we have, and the ability is there to make him come back and change it.
Yes, as a condition, yes.
Okay. Also.
I want to point out one thing. There is a typo in the special permit.
That says?
No.
Why, that too?
Twenty-five.
In the bylaw, in the bylaw.
Number nine, it was just, was typoed. Just so you know, and we're going to tell you what the real wording should be. Number nine says, "External signage shall not be limited except," and the word "limited" should be replaced with "illuminated."
Oh.
There's a state regulation on it.
Yes.
Right.
That's directly on it.
Right. And our bylaw is consistent with the state regulation, yes.
So, if we go to the last section, where it goes the summary of suggested conditions, number five also has that same error, and it should say, "External signs shall not be illuminated 30 minutes before sundown." Except.
So, the condition that I would recommend the board adopt, if it, if it chooses to do so, would, would have that corrected language in it, and would require the, a limitation on when the sign at the facility can be illuminated to the specific time period set forth in the bylaw.
So, I'll give you this.
Are you insinuating that you want me to read this?
Mm-hmm. Not, not all of it.
No, just-
Okay.
That part, two, two.
All right, understand. All right. I think I've got this pretty well figured out.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, concerns, comments?
What is, what is the security, the security again, please? The premises?
There's a security plan that we will share with police.
Could you take mine?
With respect to-
I don't know.
On-site, there are two security personnel. In addition to regulations required, we have video surveillance.
Did I get the motion? Okay.
An hour about, after the facility is closed at the evening, do we have-
After the, after the close, the property is entirely fenced off.
The system is look, is, go to the police department for alarm systems, et cetera?
Yes.
And this is probably very similar to what's happening in Colorado, et cetera.
You don't have to.
Right.
That's right here. It's got to hit you in both locations.
Right.
You're not going to do that. You're just doing that.
Again, there's no products.
Okay.
You store on the property, nor any money.
So, I don't have to read? No.
When the time comes that they do want to store product onsite, do they, are they approved for that? Do they have to get approval for that?
It's not, it's not a requirement under the bylaw.
I'm just, that's more of a question.
We are in fact returning, just as we did at the start, calling the police department to make sure their concerns are satisfied.
I believe the bylaw states that, you know, it's got to be in a secure place locked up if it's, and it's always assuming anyway that it's stored onsite. This is, your idea is different from what the bylaw demands that it be secure. You're actually removing it.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board? Comments or questions? Anybody in the audience have something they'd like to say? Any questions or comments? Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. Do you want the motion carrying both applications, or want to start with one and go to the second meeting, start maybe with the variance?
Separate.
Separate.
I'd suggest doing them separately, because there are different quantities of vote required.
Can we start with the variance one first? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance to Triple M Management Company, LLC, at 29 Echo Road, under Section 174-31, for relief from the front setback requirement, which is 75 feet, and they're looking for a variance of 72 feet, because the building is located three feet from the front yard, to construct an eight-by-eight security booth on the property located in I-1 zoning district, map 19 parcel 3, extension 9, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing the variance, I'd like to make reference to a set of plans, which, can I read? Yeah, that's what I was thinking of doing, right there. Site plan title revisions updated, update profile, construction entries revised, details. I don't know if that's the way to do it.
You didn't write one?
Yeah, that's, that's not the way to do it.
The next page. This is for the, this is the variance.
I don't know that there's updated plans to their own.
Okay. Site plan title revisions, updated profile, that still doesn't seem right. Whoever made this up.
That's what you just had.
That's what I just had. Site plan title revisions, update profile, add construction entrance revised details, add perk test location 7/27/15. Proposed layout prepared for Triple M Management, 29 Echo Road, Mashpee, Mass. Scale 1-inch equals 20, dated August 26, 2015. Prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, Inc., Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, 205 Worcester Court, Falmouth, Mass. Drawn, is it R?
RLR.
RLR. Job number 215142, DWG number NA, sheet 1 of 1. I don't think we have any Board of Health issues in reference to this. We don't make reference to that. Charlie won't have to make reference to that, we can do that in the next one. I think that's my motion at this point.
We also have, what is the maximum number of spaces re, allowed? You require 10. You have 21.
Spaces.
Yeah, so you didn't, but it is written that way.
Approval pursuant to 174, section 39.
Okay. And so, the total number of spaces that are allowed?
I don't see that in the-
We need a variance for the number of spaces, because you're going over.
Without due respect, we don't need a variance, it's become the building inspector's.
It's not in the advertisement?
Right. By law, we intend you need a vote.
I haven't read the comment. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would concur with that, with the, with the bylaw provision, Section 174-39 provides that if an applicant can establish circumstances or conditions relative to a property that would justify deviating from the 10 parking spaces, this board can approve that modification or deviation. It's not a variance per se, it's merely a vote of the board acknowledging the circumstances and approving the, in this case, additional parking.
Does that have to be advertised?
No.
Okay. Well, so I've got a motion-
We can, we can add a two vote.
Right. So, we have a motion in reference to this, and then should we take that next?
We'll do a separate vote on that later on. Is the motion on the floor, if we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, I just have it.
Thank you.
So, do we have the section of the bylaw that we want to make reference to, reference to parking?
Yeah. I would, I'll suggest a motion-
Go ahead.
If you would like.
Please.
With respect to the plans submitted by the applicant here this evening, wherein 21 parking spaces are proposed, proposed motion for the board would be to render a finding under chapter, I'm sorry, Section 174, Section 39 of the zoning bylaw, that due to the circumstances relating to this particular project, the 21 parking spaces as proposed is acceptable and appropriate.
Is that a motion?
I'll suggest that if someone wants to-
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes.
Okay. Special permit. Special permit.
Okay, now we need the variance.
Anything I have to read those?
Yeah.
Okay. Ron, would you like to make a motion on the special permit?
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit.
One second.
John, you know I only read in the special permit, I never read in the variance.
Okay, I thought we were going, normally, we read them both.
I asked you, I said you already-
Why don't you read it in, then?
Okay.
We already voted on it.
Let's read it in for the record.
29 Echo Road, Triple M Management Company, LLC, request a variance under Section 174-31 for relief from the front setback requirement to construct an eight-by-eight-foot security booth on property located in I-1 zoning district, map 19 parcel 3, exit, extension 9, Mashpee, Mass.
So, would you like to make a motion on that?
I would.
You've already heard it.
We've already done that one.
We've made the motion, and we've approved it. So, where I'm now, I'd like to make a motion reference to the special permit, if I may. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Triple M Management Company, LLC, 29 Echo Road, for the issuance of a special permit under 174-24-J to construct a 1,500-square-foot building to be utilized as a medical marijuana treatment center on property located in an I-1 zoning district, map 19 parcel 3, extension 9, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing the motion, I'd like to make reference to the following plans. Site plan title revisions, update profile, add construction entrance revised details, add perk test location 7/27/15. Proposed layout prepared for Triple M Management, 29 Echo Road, Mashpee, Mass. Scale 1-inch equals 20, dated August 26, 2015. Holmes &amp; McGrath, Inc., Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, 205 Worcester Court, Falmouth, Mass. Drawn by, is it RNR?
Yeah. RLR.
RLR. Job number 215142, drawing number NA, sheet 1 of 1. And I'd like to make, it doesn't make issue, reference there, but we should probably reference the actual building floor plan. I don't think that's part of there. There, we have two plans showing the building floor plans.
Yeah, we'll take the most.
Maybe we can get those and just sign them as maybe exhibits 1 and 2, or A and B or I'd like to also make reference to dispensary floor plan A-101 dated 8/25/2015, 3/8 of an inch equals 1 foot. Also, A-104 dispensary prospective floor plan dated 8/25/2005, drawn by BCE. And I'd like to also make the motion contingent upon, do you want me, Mr. Chairman, to read all these in?
No, we can just reference the entire thing.
Okay, I'd like to make reference to the last page of 174-24. Do you want to put exhibit number something on it, or?
Actually, you can reference the entire special permit.
Okay. 174-24C special permit use 29 Echo Road with the following modifications.
Conditions.
Conditions, well, the conditions are stated, but we were actually going to make the following changes on 9 of 11. It says external signs shall not be limited, it should be illuminated. And on the last page, which is 5 of 7, the fifth of number of 7 paragraphs, it says external signs ought to be removed, it should be illuminated again. So I'd like to make reference to all those conditions. Also, a condition would be prior to the issuance of a building permit by the building department of the town of Mashpee, the building department receives notification in writing from Mr. Rowley, the town consultant, stating that he is satisfied with the applicant's design. Do we want to condition it upon occupancy that it meets the criteria also, or do you want to be involved in it? Okay.
Retuition of the current, that does change.
All right.
Let's reference that.
Okay, I make reference to, in reference to Mr. Charles Rowley, he has sent a letter dated August 25, 2015, to the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals with four issues that need to be dealt with prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Stamp that into.
Board of Health had a question in reference to doors, and you want to bring that up?
I think that's all.
Okay.
Only other thing is, I think you want to bring in the queuing. We have to go back to the.
Yes.
Design review.
That's in it.
That's, but I've already made reference to that in here, I think, isn't it not?
Yep. Point number six.
Point number six, okay, very good.
Well, it's not in here, though.
It is, um, oh.
It's in your, it's in the motion, but it's not in the reference that I, that it's not in the reference documents, so probably made best to read that in.
Yeah.
Well, all those are included with that one. So that's also part of my motion would be if queuing on Echo Road becomes an issue, the applicant has to return to the design, to the design slash planning review committee to rectify the problem.
We've referenced all plans. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're the end of this, right?
Thank you for your time. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hmm. So we didn't, I got a question. You didn't leave these in, Bruce.
Goodbye, me. Tom, you'll have a good one.
No. Ah, yeah.
They're all contained in the bylaw.
Other? Where's the second one?
That is up there. You mixed up with some of the other papers.
What paper? There's no paper.
Oh, I made reference to this anyway, yes.
Yes.
Well, but wait a second, I just, I'm a little concerned here. Where is adding backup T at security parking area number five?
That had already been addressed prior to coming here.
Okay. Sorry, all right, okay. So you're seeing them all set? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
I trust you, you know that.
All right, so that goes next.
As you should.
Ay, yeah, 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 that was a pain in the butt.
I'm sure that it's been during that.
Okay.
Associate.
So as long as we had these, we're all set.
Yes.
Yeah, we're trying.
She's going to add those to the.
Going to stamp two to sign?
Yes.
You got another one coming?
I've got the rest of them all stapled up.
Did you stamp all the plans you needed?
Am I going to see you in that queue?
I don't know.
Meaning you're going to be in a queue.
I didn't even think about that. I didn't even think about that.
I didn't think surprise to me.
That was a good one.
That was a good one. I might be there.
We got these two. I don't know if you stamp these two.
All right, I'm almost up here now.
For me, you'd never see one of these in Mashpee.
Yeah, I know where you're coming from.
I totally, I totally agree with you.
Can't dispense it there, Ron, they have to drive home.
Do what?
Can't dispense it there, they have to drive home.
Just go in and pick it up and take it home. And sell it three quarters of the way.
I don't think we have any, do we have any more of those baked plants?
I brought our, our three are all up there.
I think they've all been returned.
I lost my agenda. So much paper. Oh, there it is, I got.
There's one of these in your handout, too, with the.
Oh, what else? That's a good.
At least it wasn't mine. Might be in there somewhere.
There you go.
That's two of them.
There you go.
We have plans of the building I need to stamp.
I just gave you two, right?
Oh, okay, yeah. Anything else?
I don't think so. This is just a smaller one.
When is the start of the construction of that thing?
You didn't want to be stamped.
I don't know, they got 20-day appeal right now.
I don't know the answer to that.
Get away 20 days before I can pull a permit.
I don't know. I guess. I'm going to get rid of everything. Let's go. I don't know if those are complete sets. I know, she was.
What? Those shows? This might be my, why, was it there?
Yeah. I thought it might be some itching sheep.
This one I think I've got. You know?
All right. Let's stamp that, send that out.
You've got to stay away from my stuff, okay?
I didn't do it.
Oh, one stamp?
Oh, that's yours.
Is it?
Yes, without your writing. Those are your exes, their girly exes. That's how I could tell, all right?
That's not mine. Those are silly. Okay. Okay, let's just get organized. And we'll move right along.
Wow. Oh, that's trash.
What are you using?
Trash.
Gender.
Wow. Trash. Taking trash. Hey, I think we're just about there. Wait a minute. Gone. Okay, we all set? All right, Scott, would you read the next new hearing and, go ahead.
51 Waterline South Drive. Owner George M. Locarno requests a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow the construction of a four-foot wide deck extension and an eight-foot by 12-foot screened porch addition on property located in I-3 zoning district Little Neck Bay overlay, assessors MAP 120, parcel 145, Mashpee, Mass.
Is all the members sitting on this? Ron, are you sitting on this one?
Yeah, I'm okay with this one, yeah. Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Corain from Mashpee Firm of Stunning Corain McNichols and Garner, and I have the pleasure of representing Mr. Locarno in connection with the application for a specific finding that is before the board this evening. What is being proposed here is a very modest addition to an existing deck situated at the property at 51 Waterline Drive. The deck currently is a non-conforming structure in that it is set closer to the side line than is currently allowed. And the lotsus that you see on the plan that we have provided is also non-conforming. The building is also non-conforming on the opposite side. There are some non-conforming accessory buildings on the side as well. We have a shed on one side and a shed on the other side, which are both within the 50-foot setback requirement from adjacent wetland resource areas. Basically, as you can see on the shaded area of the plans that we have provided, this is a small four-foot wide addition to the existing deck. And then, at the end of that four-foot wide addition, you will see a proposed rectangularly-shaped screened-in porch. A portion of that screened-in porch is located over the existing, a portion of the existing deck, and we are not increasing that side yard non-conformity in any respects. We are adhering, adhering to the 10, 10.5-foot setback on that side of the building, and we will continue to maintain that setback. The overall square footage of the new construction is 296 square feet. 70 feet of that, square feet of that, is actually situated over the existing deck. So the total additional lot coverage that is being proposed here is 226 square feet. As you may know, the Little Neck Bay development is a so-called non-special permit cluster development. Because it is a cluster development, they, the construction on lots within that development are permitted to cover 30% of the lot. In this particular case, the existing lot coverage is at 23.6, with the additional 226 feet, square feet of lot coverage, that figure will increase to 25%, however, still well within the 30% lot coverage that is permitted for construction on a lot within a cluster development. Under the specific provisions of section 17 of the bylaw, one has the ability to alter, expand a pre-existing non-conforming situation, provided the board can make a finding that what is being proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. I would suggest to the board that this relatively modest addition to the deck and the inclusion of that small screened-in porch at the end of the deck, a portion of which is over already existing construction, will not create a condition that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is currently in existence. I would point out to the board that this matter has been before the Mashpee Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the proposal and approved the proposal. I have provided you with my written remarks, which includes a copy of the subdivision assessors' reference, and a letter from the Little Neck Bay Homeowners Association, which voices its support for the proposed proposal. If the board has any questions, for me, I'll be more than happy to respond. I believe my client is here this evening, Mr. Locarno, and he is more than happy to respond to any questions that the board may have as well.
Thank you. I went out, I've seen the lot, I've seen what's going to take place. The only thing it's doing is going a little bit closer to the wetlands in some sections that's been approved. The lot coverage seems fine, no going closer to the sidelines. We do have a comment from a neighbor I will read in, and.
I have a question, Kevin. Now, the structure will be closer than 50 feet. Do you need a separate, maybe it's discussion here more than it is there, a separate decision based on that getting closer to 50 feet for the wet wetlands?
Well, I think it can be included within the specific finding that what's being proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. And as I indicated, I also pointed out that we're dealing with overall non-conforming conditions on the lot, and the shed that you see here in this location is some 37 feet from the wetland resource area. So what's being proposed here is getting no closer than what's already there.
And Conservation has already said.
And Conservation has already said, okay.
So then it shouldn't be more detrimental?
That's our assumption.
Makes sense to me.
All right, I have some comments I'll read in at this point. It's from the inspections Department. 51 Waterline South Drive. The area is zoned I-3 and is in the pre-contact archaeological sensitive, sensitivity area listed as high sensitivity. Seeking a written finding under article 174-17 regarding a determination from the board if the extension of the deck and the addition of the screened porch will increase the non-conformity nature of the house. So this is a high sensitive area. So when you get to a point where you're digging, if you are to find anything unusual in an archaeological sense, you must stop immediately, and there's a number, I believe, at the State And I think you're aware of that, Kevin?
Yes.
Exactly what to do? Okay. Any questions, you can certainly come to the Building Department. Let's see what else we have. From the Board of Health, no comment on 51 Waterline South Drive. The applications for Waterline Drive has been approved by Conservation, no issues. And that's an email from Drew McManus dated yesterday, Tuesday, August 25. I also have a rather lengthy email from a John Powers. Is John Powers here? Okay. Rather than to steal your show, I'll let you get up when time permits and you can have your say. So that is it for the comments I have from other boards and departments. Anybody else have any comments or questions regarding this? Seeing none. Anybody in the audience? Come right up if you would. You would state your name and address and you can have your say.
My name is John Powers, 47 Waterline Drive. I am the abutter next to this property, and I am not opposed to the expansion of the deck at all. Technically not opposed to screened porch, it's just the location, because it's right at the edge of, close to the edge of the property line. What happened was, when I built my house and Mr. Locarno started building his house, he asked for variance. I gave him a six-foot variance at the time. I was told that the front corner of his house would be the only part of his house that would require the variance, and that it faced my garage, so therefore it wouldn't have any impact, impact on me. I approved it. I shouldn't have, we wouldn't be having this meeting now if I hadn't approved it. Since then, I did not know that when I approved it, the plans changed to include a pool, which is an above-ground pool that runs along the side of the property line along the good portion of the variance that I gave him. So what it creates is we have two properties that are very close to each other, and my concern is now with this screened-in porch porch right at the end of that deck, right at the, I would say is probably, probably 10 feet from the property line, maybe even west.
10.5.
10.5. And I, after looking at the renderings, I'm seeing that even though it's, it's eight-by-12 or nine-by-12, it has a roof on it with a cupola, looks like it, it has to be a good 15 feet high. The deck is already, because of the concrete pool, it's 10 feet, it's a 10-feet concrete foundation that, that the pool and deck goes around. Adding another 15 to that, we're talking about 25 feet up, and it's right against my, my property line, or closer to my property line. I, too, because I'm on Conservation, I am set, I have the microbook buffer, and I have a very small deck that happens to be on that side, and it can only be there because that was the only available land to build the deck. So as a result, we both have properties that are so close to each other. I know Mr. Locarno doesn't, didn't want this location, but he was advised that it would be better to pick that because it's further away from the wetlands. But I look at the rest of his property, it seems to me that if he could get approval from Conservation to relocate this screened-in porch to a location that'd be further away from me, it would be better for all of us. So the net net is, I have a wall that goes down, and I have pictures if you'd like to see that. I have a wall, and then I have the, it has a fairly large shed, which they were just talking about, that is very, again, 45 feet from the property line, so I have, I feel like, I have this big, long wall that's coming up with no privacy, and I do think that it does take away from the value of my property as well. So that's my argument.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak, please?
May I speak, please?
Come right up, and if you would, state your name.
My name is Gary Locarno.
Wait till you get to the mic, if you would.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time, everyone.
No problem.
My name is Gary Locarno. I'm the owner of the lot. And I've had concerns with Mr. Powers for years over privacy issues. And in fact, between all the, if you're familiar with Little Neck Bay or that area, we all have very small lots. So, I landscaped the whole area. I spent, I can't tell you how much money, but it's irrelevant. But I put every landscaping tree along the property line from the front, privates all the way to the back, white pines. They are now 30 to 40 feet high because I wanted the privacy just as much as he did. I asked him, so, then when I thought about this project some 15 years later, I went to the Architectural Review Board in Little Neck Bay, and I went over the design with them after having it designed locally by an architect in town. And they said, "This is great." I then went to Matt Costa at the engineering firm, and I said, "Matt, where can we put this?" It is a small addition, but where can we put it to be at least evasive and not have any conservation issues and keep privacy? And he said, "Gary, there's only really one place you can put this little addition. It's got to be on that side because of the configuration of the 50-foot, 100-foot setback lines." So, that being the case, I made sure, if you look at this...
Grab the mic.
Take the mic with you.
Take it right out. There you go.
So, what I did was, I made sure that Mr. Powers' deck is over here, okay? So, I wanted to make sure I was out further away from his deck, because right now, when we sit here, it's a very narrow deck. I can just about walk by it without falling in the pool. And this is typically where we sit now, now, right in here, which is even closer. So, I, so by having it here, I'm actually further away from his deck. And I've got all these white pines situated here that I planted. So, I then went to Little Neck Bay Association. I went over the design with them. I said, "What do you guys think?" And they said, "We think it's great. We like your plan. We approve your plan." So, then I went through Conservation. When we went through Conservation, John objected, Mr. Powers objected to Conservation, and I called John up, trying to be neighborly about it. And I said, "John, what's your concern?" And he said, "Well, I don't have a problem with your deck extension, but I got a problem with this little addition here." I said, "Well, what's the concern?" I said, "I'm further away from your property here than I am back here. Plus, if you really truly have a privacy concern, why didn't you put any trees on your property? I put every tree here." Because his expression, his expressed statement to me was, "My concern is privacy." And I said, "Well, if it's truly privacy, you have plenty of room to put trees over here." And I said, "In fact, if you want to put some trees on there, I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you about sharing the cost of those trees, putting them on your property. But I can't put any more on mine. I've got it loaded with white pines." And now, when I look from my deck over to his property, all I see is white pines, because I put them there. So, as much as I understand his concerns, and they are my concerns as well, I think every Little Neck Bay resident, because of the size of the lots, have issues with privacy matters. And therefore, they try to landscape it appropriately to deal with those issues, and that's what I'm doing. And if there needs to be more trees, I'm happy to put more trees in, but I really don't have any room to put it in. But if he wants to put some more trees here, I'm not sure they're necessary, but I'm happy to accommodate that as well. But other than that, I can't, I just can't do any more than I've already done. I've done all I can do for privacy issues here. And all I can say to you is that by going further west, I'm going further away from his deck, which should make it a lot better for him, because then I'm not going to be sitting so close to him as I am now. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Squeeze the bottom part. Yeah, there you go.
Thanks.
Kevin, did you have any response?
I did provide the board with these photographs, and I think the photographs do support what my client has just indicated relative to the degree of landscaping that he has provided that currently exists along the side of the property that is between he and his abutter.
Can I see the pines that he's talking about? So, it's going right on this corner, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's going on that corner and coming towards the shed.
Coming this way?
This way.
Extending, extending.
Extending towards the shed. Here's the shed here.
Oh, I got you.
Okay. And it's coming in a straight line.
Do you have a site plan, John?
I've been out there.
Be able to see the shaded.
It's going in a straight line, no closer to the property line than what currently exists.
Those pines are pretty high.
Currently exist, yes. They appear to be.
I'm sure your first choice for a screen porch location isn't the farthest point from the house. You'd rather have a screen porch closer to the house because of the odd shape that's really obvious you can put it.
Thank you.
So, I mean, if I want to have a screen porch, I want to have it close to the house to make it, but now you have to, I can see, that's why it is where it is. I can understand the four-foot extension, because it is now a walkway.
No, because that's not here. This is asking about the construction. So, the question is, the building code is the building code.
Right. Any comments from you at all on this?
I have none, other than what I already presented to the board.
It's not going any closer to the sideline, is it?
No, it is not.
No.
It's been approved by Conservation, is that correct?
That is correct. And I would also point out that we do have a provision in our bylaw relative to cluster subdivisions, which Ron had raised an issue earlier, that dimensional changes in the cluster subdivisions that occurred later aren't really applicable to dimensional, future dimensional changes. So, at the time that this law was created, I'm not even sure the 50-foot setback requirement was in existence.
From BVW?
Correct.
Any comments or questions from the board? Anybody? Any other comments from anybody in the audience? Seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to George M. Locarno at 51 Waterline South Drive, under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a four-foot wide deck extension and an eight-by-12 screen porch addition on property located in R3 zoning district, Little Neck Bay Overlay Assessors Map 120 parcel 145 Mashpee, Mass. Issuing, in making the motion, I'm stating that the board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of a written finding on a Mash General Laws 48, Section 6. And the plot plan is prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, owner of record, Locarno Family Residence Trust, care of Gary M. Locarno, 339 Marlborough Street, Boston, Mass. Applicant Gary M. Locarno, 339 Marlborough Street, Boston, Mass. Project site plan for conservation, 51 Waterline Drive South in Mashpee, Mass. Sheet number one of one, dated 5/29/15, drawing file number, Waterline 51 Locarno, drawn by WD, checked by MC, drawn by Chris Costa, dated 5/29/15. Also like to make reference to building plans prepared by Ed Cembriello, architectural design for Gary M. Locarno, 51 Waterline Drive South, Mashpee, Mass. Scale one-quarter equals one foot, dated 6/12/15, drawn by FDC, drawing number one of three, with a total of three of three, one and two and three, three sheets. Stamped by Richard Anderson, number 1977. I believe that's an eight.
Mm-hmm.
Dated? Dated, yeah. I didn't say, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did, 6/12/15. I already said that.
Thank you.
Pay attention. And there are no water health or conservation issues, correct?
Correct. None.
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Let's see, how do we vote? I will vote yes. Bill?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
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 Five to nothing? It passes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
No. Well, I could see what the...
Do you know where we're at?
I don't know either.
Beautiful piece of property, huh?
Do we have another plan I can stamp on right in front of you?
Um, yes, right here.
Thank you.
Sorry. Can't keep these. Going back, no way.
Going back.
Going back. Tight, tight, tight. 1178. The next one?
Let's get this one.
1178. Hold on. 1178.
1178.
Is that it?
I think so.
We have one more. Any more paperwork out there?
Did you sign something that...
I'll pass them back.
I didn't see it. She's got it.
Okay. Scott, would you read the next new hearing, please?
Can I read it from stepping down?
We're talking about Great Hay?
Yep.
Who's stepping down?
Scott.
So, all right. Don, would you like to read this?
Yes. 1178 Great Hay Road. Owner Scott Hay and Denise Funnas request a special permit under Section 174-45-4 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 676 square feet accessory apartment properly located in an R3 zoning district, map 103 parcel 9, Mashpee, Mass.
Sir?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Scott Frodeus, and along with my wife Denise, we're here this evening to request a special permit to build an accessory apartment for my own parents. They're in their mid-80s now, and they've been attended to a little more than they had hoped for. So, we're proposing a 26-by-26 addition on the 1178 Great Hay Road. We're going to be increasing our lot coverage from 11.2% to 13.9%. We're here to request your approval.
I have a question.
Yes?
What is the square footage of the proposed in-law apartment? What's the square footage of the existing house?
676 square.
What's the square footage of the existing dwelling?
76 square feet from the new?
The existing dwelling is 1774 square feet without the apartment. With the apartment, it would be 2405 square feet.
What was the apartment, 600?
Where's the apartment again?
676.
676, okay. What's that percentage?
Yeah.
1218. Sounds like about 30-something percent?
Depending. I'm just told that the proposed apartment would be counted as part of it. That would make it 28%. If it's not, it is in the mid-to-high 30s.
I'm sorry, what? Say that again?
It's proposed to the fact that, you know, if that proposed addition was on the home already, and that's what we converted into the in-law apartment, that it would be considered part of the overall square footage.
If you, if you look at the total structure now, including the apartment and the main dwelling, the apartment consists of 27% of the total structure.
Yeah, it cannot be more than 40.
Correct.
So, you're very, you're well within?
Right, correct. We're not, yeah.
27.6, excuse me.
How many bedrooms is it going to have? So, you're saying that's 27% of that?
Primary residence, and the apartment will have a total of three bedrooms.
The entire structure.
Primary residence, and there'll be a third one.
So, you add all that, and then divide by that? Even if you didn't, I can tell you what the percent would be.
Page three of the plans, John.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the bylaw.
38%.
Accessory apartment shall be self-contained, separate sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities, for the exclusive use of the occupants. Provided the requirements of subsection B are met, there's a maximum of two bedrooms in the accessory apartment. Rooms which might be converted at some time to a bedroom, such as study studios, libraries, and the like, shall be counted as bedrooms for the purposes of this section. At least one off-street parking space, not a problem there. No new curb cuts, not a problem there, right? Okay, special permit, if it was granted, under this section, run with the property owner, and shall lapse on the sale or transfer of this property. Design installation of the accessory apartment shall be secondary, incidental to the principal use of the structure as the owner's home. Close-floor area of the accessory apartment shall not be less than 300 square feet, not more than 40% of the close-floor area of said structure in the date of special permit application.
So, it's not more than 40% of that? I guess so. Which, which... Still there.
You agree with that, Mike?
Which is awful. And they're, they're still within that? He's got, it's 38, it's close, but it's still...
Also have one question. There's a lot beside you on the corner of Redbrook Road, Great Hay Road. Is that your lot?
It is not. There is another...
It looked like it was connected.
Yeah. There's another residence there, number, I think it's 1078. I think this home faces Redbrook, but it addresses off J. Hay.
Yeah, because I rode around the corner, I said, "Are they connected?"
Yeah.
I was a little unsure. Okay. Anything else to add?
Yeah.
The year? I know this language on that. Is it in here somewhere?
Yes, it is.
Must be on page 87 or close.
What are you looking for, John?
That once a year...
Yeah.
Has to come.
Have to provide sufficient...
I believe we have to write a letter saying...
Sufficient documentation to the building inspector on the one-year anniversary. Each anniversary, one year after the approval of this, to the building inspector or building commissioner to indicate that, give him sufficient proof that you are still the owner occupied. And you've started a tickler file on that, right, Mike? So, if you don't, he'll catch you.
So, come and see him. He doesn't want to...
Basically, our plan is, is we don't have a master bedroom on the first floor, so when my parents are done with using it, it's going to have a trust roof so that we can move the walls out and make it a master bedroom. We don't intend to use it long-term.
The other thing I think we need to bring up is that it is in a high-sensitive area.
Okay. High-sensitive area means archaeologically, it could be some remains. So, if you're digging at all, and you run into anything that looks questionable, stop what you're doing and read that fully and report what you've found. Do we have comments from any?
We've got a board of health comment, which is...
Would you read it in?
Well, I have it, which is part of the motion. Board of Health comment, requirements, dwelling is limited to three bedrooms. Floor plans are provided for the existing dwell, floor plans are to be provided for the existing dwelling prior to building permit. Fences, I don't know if those are all board health. I'm getting...
From the board of health.
I'm getting enough to act...
I got it right here.
Yeah, it'd be better to read it that way.
Highlighted number two.
All right.
In dark.
Floor plans required to determine bedrooms and decrease in bedrooms to allow for the in-law apartment. New septic proposed. Building permit shall not be approved by board of health until licensed septic install obtained, septic install permit. So, you have not filed a plan for board health yet?
Other than the design and review committee, no. That's the only time they've seen it.
So, you understand you need to go to the, you need to go to the board of health and...
Right.
And get their, obtain their approval.
Now that they, they can actually start to do that site work for that.
Which this board's gonna have to...
So, that's gonna be a condition on this. It's got to get that done.
We'll not get a building permit until that condition is met.
Is there any other comments, Isaiah? That's all we have for comments. Any questions or comments from any, anybody on the board? Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Seeing none? Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I certainly would. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Scott A. and Dennis C. Fronius of eleven seventy-eight Great Hay Road under section one seventy-four forty-five period dot four of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a six hundred and seventy-six square foot accessory apartment properly located in an R-three zoning district, map one oh three, parcel nine, Mashpee, Mass. In making the motion, I'd like to make reference to the following plans. Site plan titled Proposed In-Law Apartment, eleven seventy-eight Great Hay Road, Mashpee, Mass, prepared for Scott and Dennis Furnas, eleven seventy-eight Great Hay Road, Mashpee, Mass, engineering by Engineering Works, Inc., twelve West Crossfield Road, Forestdale, Mass, O-two-six-four-four, surveying by Warner Surveying, twenty-two Long Road, Harwich, Mass, scale one inch equals twenty feet, drawn by PTM, job number one twenty-five, dated five seven fifteen. Checked PTM sheet number one of two, stamped by Peter T. McIntee, civil engineer number three five one oh nine. Like to also make reference to a set of plans uh, which depict the building, sheet ones through five inclusive, dated seven twelve fifteen, prepared by David McLean, McLean, Architect Design Services, five oh eight seven four oh five eight oh seven, prepared for the Furnius residents, eleven seventy-eight Great Hay Road, Mashpee, Mass. Should I say one quarter inch equals one foot? If I didn't, I will. Dated seven twelve fifteen. Again, one, page one through five. Also like to make reference to a board of health requirement, dwelling is limited to three bedrooms. You must obtain board of health approval before the issuance of a building permit. Uh, the floor plans are provided for existing dwell... Floor plans must be provided for existing dwelling prior to the issuance of a building permit. Fences enclosed and alarmed around the pool. All onsite dri... The all onsite driveway is used for parking. The homeowner must comply with all sections listed under section one seventy-four forty-five four. The special permit is not transferable and will lapse upon sale and/or transfer to another property owner.
Let's read in these two.
Okay.
These are different plans by...
Really? That, wouldn't they be the site plan?
Additional site plan was, 'cause it didn't put the lot coverage on it.
So, which one would be in addition to...
Talk a little one here. This guy.
Oh.
These two?
Okay. So, I'd like to also make reference to a site plan, Proposed In-Law Apartment, eleven seventy-eight Great Hay Road, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by Scott, prepared for Scott and Dennis Furnius, eleven seventy-eight Great Hay Road, Mashpee Ma... Mashpee, Mass, surveyed by Warner Surveying, scale one inch equals twenty, drawn by PTM, job number one twenty-five fifteen, dated five seven fifteen, checked by PTM, sheet number one of two. So, I also read in the record, two of two. Stamped by Terry N. Warner, again, number three eight seven two one.
I think we got everything, didn't we?
I think I got everything.
Do I have a second?
Your wife's name, Denise.
I'll include that, too.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So, wasn't that this card not correct?
Yes, we do.
I think it was.
I do, too.
I think I read it twice.
I did, too.
Was that Jonathan?
Mm-hmm.
You did fine, John.
It's just I read the...
Twice.
I'm all right with that.
All right.
Be sure. Do you want these plans your way, Jonathan?
Uh, yeah, I got a stamp on the set.
Sorry, sorry. You all right?
Problem.
I know. Lucky he had glasses. Twenty-two Lee Shore. This thing's still hanging around. Listen, twenty-two Lee Shore, five G M.
All the paper in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, you got a bet on the idea. How come? Somebody fucked up on the copy.
All right. Next one is going to be sixty-seven Papanas Island. I think we have two people stepping down.
Oh, it is?
What happened to... Twenty-one, twenty-two Lee Shore.
Excuse me.
Twenty-two Lee Shore.
My error. So, let's, Scott, if you would, read the next one.
Twenty-two... Twenty-two Lee Shore Drive, owners Kenneth D. and Sharon B. Clint, trustees request variance relief for the rear yard setback to allow for construction of a twen... Excuse me. Twenty-four by twenty-four foot detached garage and properly located in an R-three zoning district, Seabrook Village District, map one oh two, parcel fifty-four, Mashpee.
Anybody stepping down on this?
No.
Okay, it'll be the five regular board numbers. Hi.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kenneth Clint. I'm here with my wife Sharon. I'm also here with two board members from the Seabrook Village Association, Peggy Thiefton and me, our brothers. I signed the plans in July to be, uh, the district garage for the Seabrook Village Association Board. They gave their approval of the physical structure. It came time to vote for building permit. The, even though it's R-three zoning, it's cluster zoning with a, you know, rear yard, Seabrook Village Association. The rear setback's twenty feet.
I have that.
I have a turning radius and, uh, geographic issue. I, if the further I move towards the front of the property, property drops off. And the twenty feet, I've asked for four feet of relief for sixteen. I actually, I made this request to the board. The board has given me a letter, which I believe you have the copy of.
Yes.
And they, they approved providing this four feet of relief. It's no closer to any abutting property. It's, it's actually, you know, the conservation land that's behind the property. And I request, uh, your approval for this, for this variance.
Okay, and the reason why you can't go any closer to the front is because it drops off, I believe, severely, doesn't it? I took a look yesterday and...
It, it's a pie-shaped lot. And the further I...
Goes right up. So, you're only really looking for a four-foot variance in the rear?
Yes, that's correct.
Did you see lot coverage from it?
Right. Wasn't the side, is the side twen... is the side...
That's a question.
There's two sixteen foot.
Yeah, maybe it's fifteen on the side?
Fifteen on the side. Twenty in the rear, I believe.
Okay. Do we have lot coverage anywhere?
Yes, it's on the site plan that was done by Holmes and McGrath. The lot coverage right now is eleven point three percent. And with the addition of the garage, it's fourteen point six.
That's on this plan somewhere?
Bar left.
Yes, the low-left bar.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there it is.
Got you covered.
It was any bigger.
I didn't in plain sight. It was on your side.
All right, we have a letter here from Seabrook Village Association. Do I have the volunteer to read it in, Dick? Why don't you wait till my mother's full?
That's right.
Seabrook Village Association, July twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, in reference to Ken and Sharon Clint, twenty-two Lee Shore Drive, Mashpee, Mass, to whom it may concern per the byright cluster provision of eight floor nineteen seventy-one town of Mashpee, stating a fifteen-foot side setback and a twenty-foot rear setback for Seabrook Village. The Architectural Committee Chair and the Board of Directors of the Seabrook Village Association Board hereby approve the relief of a total of four feet to sixteen feet of the twenty-foot rear setback, which borders association land behind twenty-two Lee Shore Drive. This relief of four feet is in request by the above residents to construct a detached two-car garage as per plans presented to the Seabrook Association Architectural Committee and approved pending approval of the zoning board of the town of Mashpee. Signed by Megan Maderos Clark, SVA, dated seven twenty-five, two thousand fifteen, and William Crylowitz. Sorry if I made a mess of that. Also dated seven twenty-three, two thousand fifteen.
Are there any elevations of the building?
I did bring, actually, an ar... Well, I have the whole set plan with me.
We should probably read those into the record or make them part of the record of... Oh, we do?
On the permit. Yeah, you have an extra set.
Wait, so they were after you. We just saw that.
He's the same, um, architectural designer.
Oh, I'm saying that, 'cause I just read that same thing into the, into the, into the record last.
That's very unusual.
He's the busy man.
He's doing well, isn't he?
Yes.
That's very unusual.
Yeah.
Dave McLean.
Very nice.
Any questions or comments from anybody on the board?
I have some board of health comments.
No, this, it's an unoccupied space. I've gone to the board of health and then I've gone to conservation.
Can't be...
They also give us comments to read into the public record. But before we got to that, I was just seeing, you know, if there was anybody had any questions or comments. Bill, would you like to read that in?
Yeah, board of health comments dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen. Septic inspection performed July twenty-first, first, two thousand fifteen as required. No habitable heated space above the garage will be allowed.
Yes. Understood.
Condition.
Make that a part of the condition. May I see it, please?
Yeah, it's board of health.
Oh, I've got it here.
Board of health.
No problem. I've got it.
Okay, also, I have a note here dated August seventh, inspections department, and it lists twenty-two Lee Shore Drive. The area is zoned R-three and is in the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area. Listed as moderate sensitivity. Property is within the Seabrook Village Cluster, which requires a detached garage to be no closer than twenty feet from the rear property line. But the applicant is seeking a variance to be closer to the rear property line. So, you're in the moderate sensitivity area. Do any digging, you see anything whatsoever? Stop the presses and I think we have something for you to follow that procedure. If we don't have one, we will get one for you.
So, it is twenty-foot setback in that area?
Yeah, in the rear. It's a cluster.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any comments from anyone else?
Conservation, uh, no comments. Nope.
No more, no more comments from the board. Anybody in the audience have comments? Come right up if you would, state your name, and you can have your say.
Good evening. My name is William Crylowitz. You're very close. Very close. And I am the architectural chairperson of the Seabrook Village Association. I did a site review myself. Problems with it. The board actually, as a whole, approved of this, um, building of the garage. And I even, we worked with one of the board members, and she approved of it as well. So, I just wanted to say that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Did you have a further comment?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a four-foot variance to Kenneth D. and Sharon B. Clint of twenty-four Lee Shore Drive in relief of their rear yard setback to allow for construction of a twenty-four by twenty-four detached garage and property located in an R-three zoning district, Seabrook Village District, map one oh three, parcel fifty-four, Mashpee, Mass. I'd like to make reference to the following plans. Plot plan titled Plan of Proposed Garage prepared by Ke... Kenneth Clint, twenty-two Lee Shore Drive in Mashpee, Mass, Seabrook Village, map one oh two, parcel fifty-four, scale one inch equals twenty feet, dated January fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, by Holmes and McGrath, Inc., Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, two oh five Worcester Court, Unit four A, or A-four, Falmouth, Mass, signed by Michael B. McGrath, number two eight nine seven eight, Registered Engineer, drawn PJR, job number two one five zero zero one, DWG number eight eight dash four dash six three, sheet one of one. I'd also make a reference to elevations and floor plans and building plans, one through six inclusive, drawn by David McLean, Architect Design Services, five oh eight seven four oh five eight oh seven, drawn seven nineteen fifteen. Again, one quarter equals one foot. And let's see, my other notes here.
Board of health.
Board of Health has a note which reads, "Septic inspection performed July twenty-first, two thousand fifteen is required. No habitable heated space above garage."
That's a condition.
That is a condition. I'm aware of no other...
Do we get, do we get this plan, too?
That should have been, yes. Yep.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.[1687.68]
Good luck. I'll probably have another one of those.
If I have another one of those ones.
Get the letter. Get the letter, right.
All right.
One of those letters. Want this?
Sure.
Are you stepping down with them?
I am too. So...
You're done for the night?
You are too?
No, I gotta come back.
Good friends of mine.
Okay, you're stepping down with us?
Yes.
So is Scott.
Yes.
Okay.
They are dear friends of mine, so I don't think that I want to put them or myself in jeopardy.
Okay, Dom. Dom, I'm gonna have you read the next...
Sixty-seven...
Yes, please.
Sixty-seven...
I'm gonna get to that.
Sixty-seven Poppiness Island Road. Owners, David J. and Ann T. Paparella. Trustees request a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow construction of a fourteen by sixteen kitchen addition on property located in an R three zoning district, map one oh six, parcel nine Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, before we get started, I need to inform you of something. Every petitioner is entitled to have five ZBA members. We actually only have six on the board. And when we have five members, as in every petition, in order for the petition to pass, there must be four positive votes. Two of the six members have stepped down. Given that, you will need to get all four positive votes. And unfortunately, I could normally offer you to come back when there's five, but all we have is six and two step down, so there's no replacements. So what I'm basically telling you is you're going to need to get four positive votes. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's David Paparella. My sister and I are trustees of the property on Row. It's actually a property that's occupied by my aunt, who's eighteen years old. When my sister and I became trustees of the property, we decided it would be a good thing if we made that property handicap accessible for my aunt. She lives in Worcester. She commutes to the Cape during the summer. And as she ages, she's also commuting during the wintertime. We thought that that would be coming to an end sooner rather than later. But in order to do that, we needed to modify the house to accommodate earnings as she ages. So we've had a design made for a handicap accessible bathroom and kitchen as a remodeling project for the house. We've got an approval of our plans from the New Seabury Architectural Review Committee. We've got an approval from the Board of Health to get the Title V inspection done, which we did and we passed. We went before the Conservation Commission with our plan, and we had approval from the Conservation Commission to go ahead. We went to get the building permit, and we were denied the permit because the lot is a non-conforming lot as far as the setback of the house and the proximity to the water. So that's where we're at in the process. What we're building on this addition, it's fourteen by sixteen feet. It's actually being built on top of an existing deck, which is going to be removed. So our lot coverage will be just slightly more than what it currently is. It's going from sixteen...
That's all right.
Sixteen two to seventeen.
Yeah, so we're trying to make sure that we're building on top of something that exists already.
Talked about a bathroom. It doesn't show on the plans. It just shows as a...
All we have is this plan. Do you have others?
No, I have the whole plan here. There's an existing bathroom on the first floor.
Do you have a set of those you can leave with the building department?
Yeah.
So the bathroom has nothing to do with this kitchen addition?
Yes, the bathroom... Well, no, the kitchen addition is separate. The bathroom is just taking an existing bathroom and making it bigger. But that's not part of this project. We're here for the kitchen addition.
Just you had mentioned the bathroom. It just confused me because I couldn't see it on the plans.
Got it. It's no additional bathrooms, no additional bedrooms.
I was about to visit the house yesterday. I agree with exactly what you've said. Sixty, seventy, seventy-five percent, whatever it is, is going to be over an existing deck. Not going to be... Well, you're gonna be a little bit closer to the wetlands, I believe. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. This is the closest.
I was looking at this here. Oh, here's our... Oh, here's our wetlands.
Yeah, no, they're not.
That's the side.
That's right.
I haven't seen property on forty-four Poppiness.
Yep.
So you're good on that.
Be familiar with this.
You had no issues with...
See some property on forty-four.
Conservation.
No, we have the copy of the determination of applicability.
Yeah, well, they've sent us some information. I'll read into the record. First, I'll go with the Inspections Department. Has written, let's see...
Right here.
Okay, the area is zoned R three and is in the pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area, listed as moderate sensitivity. The property is in the AE flood zone. Seeking a written finding under Article five, one seventy-four seventeen, regarding the determination from the board if the proposed kitchen addition would increase the non-conforming nature of the home. So you're in a moderate sensitivity area. So when they're digging, if they run into anything that looks suspicious, need to stop what you're doing and follow those directions, basically contacting the state. We also have a comment from the Board of Health. Says, "Septic inspection performed on July seventh. Floor plans not reviewed, but as long it is for an open kitchen, no further comment."
No.
What does open kitchen mean? That's not a term I'm familiar with.
Well, I believe open concept. Is that what they mean by that?
I don't know, but the design is for the existing kitchen to just be moved out.
Right.
There's no wall separating the kitchen from the rest of the house.
Oh, okay.
It's open.
It's not, yeah, there's no doorway to it.
Right.
I don't know. That's what I was asking. I guess that's what it means. It's not a term I'm familiar with.
Okay.
Open concept.
It's not an outdoor kitchen.
No.
Okay, and I have an email dated August twenty-fifth from Andrew McManus Conservation, and it says, "The application for sixty-seven Poppiness Island has been approved by Conservation. No issues. Signed, Drew." That's it for comments here. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
No, I don't.
Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Bill, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion that we approve a written finding for sixty-seven Poppiness at Island Road. Owners, David J. and Ann T. Paparella. Trustees request for a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a fourteen-foot by sixteen-foot kitchen addition on property located in our three zoning district, map one oh six, parcel nine Mashpee, Mass. And the board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Law Forty A, Section six, and it's conditioned on a site plan prepared for David Paparella of sixty-seven Poppiness at Island Road Mashpee, Mass., J. E. Landers-Cowley, P. E. Civil Engineering, Environmental Engineering, P. O. Box thirty-three six four, West Falmouth, Mass., zero two five seven four, number one zero six dash nine. Pretty good, huh?
Say that.
No, I figured I'd leave that to you.
That's a number.
Uh-huh. Date, twelve two fourteen, scale one inch equals ten feet. Drawn by JDR, job number two four six nine, Sheet one of one. Revised one, twenty fifteen. Revised again, seven, twenty fifteen.
Did I say anything?
I don't think so.
Do we have plans we want to...
The building commissioner doesn't want them. He doesn't need them.
Not for this.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set. Well done, good luck.
Sir.
You think they ought to change that abbreviation?
You almost caught on that one, didn't you? Did you or didn't you?
I can't remember.
I remember it, though. I couldn't come up quickly enough with what that was. I knew it was something.
I assume it's a...
I think you're right.
It's a pretty bad abbreviation.
I'm gonna check with the author of that particular.
Exactly.
Now, what is...
We have another one of these?
That's yours, isn't it?
Yeah.
Dom, down there.
And you took some place, huh?
No, I don't think we have another one.
I did, I took this. That's all I took.
Here it is.
Who didn't sign it?
There's only four of us on this one. All right. I'm gonna take one quick break.
Yeah, I think I have two.
I'm gonna hit the head myself. I have to too.
I guess we took a break.
We're gonna take a break.
We'll take a five... We'll take a five-minute break.
We're taking a break.
John, before I forget... Hey, John, before I forget-
Sixteen addition and a seventeen by nineteen sunroom on property located in an R3 zoning district, map one twelve, parcel twenty-four, Mashpee, Mass. Twenty-six Cross Tree Way, owners John A. and Janet L. Hayden request a variance under section one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws proximity from the water and wetlands to allow for construction of a ten by sixteen addition and a seventeen by nine sunroom on property located in an R3 zoning district, map one twelve, parcel twenty-four, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, members of the board. Stephen Cook from Catuapay Design, a project designer, representing John and Janet Hayden. With me is John Hayden, sitting right behind me. The Haydens are looking to expand their house ten feet by sixteen feet on the northerly side of the property lawn. Where the existing deck structure is located, which brings it thirty-eight feet within the inside face of-
Do we get one?
Bulkhead, that's there, the existing bulkhead. And then propose to do a seventeen foot by nineteen foot sunroom on the southerly side of the property, which I had noted on the plan as forty-six feet from the interior edge of the bulkhead, which actually fifty-one feet to the outer edge of the bulkhead are stone and painted wall there. Pretty close. It'll be included both in the application. I know there will be some discussion. Everything that we're proposing matches the existing construction of the house. We received approvals through the Conservation Commission and the ARC. Like I said, it's on, there's an existing deck there. That deck will be removed, but the footprint is, doesn't expand any closer to the bulkhead or any closer to the side property lines than what is in now. Meet all side risks. And lot coverage is nineteen point seven percent. Now, I will take any questions.
That's the wrong plan.
So Steve, I presume you said this, but I was busy looking for plans?
Okay.
So, the lot coverage is nineteen point seven, existing and proposed?
Yeah, it's unchanged.
So, the future sunroom is on a deck, I presume?
Right, yeah.
And the proposed addition is on a deck?
Correct, yeah.
So, there's no change?
No change at all. Yeah, meet all setback requirements, lot coverage unchanged.
So...
The variance proportion of your request here, are we just dealing first with the-
Written finding?
Written finding?
Yeah, I was asked to submit both because it wasn't very clear. Because the only reason that we're here, because we're within fifty feet of-
But you're not going-
But the deck already exists.
Oh, it exists, correct, yeah. That's why, yeah. I was asked to-
They must have sent him. And he's not in the room right now.
I don't know why you're here.
I know that. When we, when the builder, which is Scott Goldstein, went for the permit, he was stopped and he was asked to, comes before the board because you're within fifty feet. It's new construction, but it's already an existing structure. I had that discussion, I think with Mike, yeah.
I'd love to hear from Mike, as one member.
But he said it was a new structure, even though there is an existing structure. We're gonna tear down the existing deck and put a new footing in.
Oh, okay.
All right, so he had his reasoning.
So, I think that's-
So, it doesn't change lot coverage, but the fact that it's a new structure would, I see.
Yeah, but even though there is a structure there, so.
So, you had a question for Mike?
Yeah, my question is, and I think we understand now, if the, if there's an existing structure that he's going to, I guess now we understand he's gonna tear it down and put something back. Is that why he's here? And I'm trying, I'm trying to understand why he is here.
Yeah.
I don't wanna put words in your mouth, so. Why is he here?
Yeah, because you've got a non-conforming structure. I don't have that, sorry.
Because we have a non-conforming structure, I don't have that authority to grant-
Oh, you're getting me again.
Yes, I am.
You love it.
I do, actually.
But it exists already.
That was my point before. It was saving the board time by having me make the determination, but the board-
But if it already exist, all right.
Once you tear down and re-
He's just, he's getting us.
Once you tear down, no. The reality is, once you tear it down, you're supposed to conform.
I understand.
See what I'm saying? It's like saying, well, I'm gonna tear down a house that's non-conforming and put back a non-conforming house. I don't have that authority. Show me in the zoning bylaw where it says I can grant it.
Got me.
I got no problem with it. Show me what you do it. I, I don't mind helping the applicant. I don't have a problem with that. I'm limited to what the book says. I don't have the authority.
So, so-
It's an internal thing.
So, what they're looking, what they're looking for then is a written finding that it's not more detrimental and a variance-
Not more non-conforming, yada, yada, yada.
And a variance to say that the non-conformity has not changed.
We have some comments?
Yeah, I got it.
And let me start with the inspections department. Twenty-six Cross Tree Way, the area is zoned R3, and part of the property is in the pre-contact archaeologically sensitivity area listed as moderate. So, if you find anything while digging, you know exactly what to do.
Exactly, yeah.
Most of this property is in the AE flood zone, which the house resides in, but a portion of it is also in the VE flood zone. Seeking a written finding under Article Five, Section one seventy-four seventeen regarding the termination from the board if the addition and the sunroom would increase the non-conformity nature of the home. Okay, also, it says- Twenty-six Cross Tree Way, most of this is the same. It says the area is zoned R3, part of it is again in the moderate sensitivity area. Most of the property is in the AE flood zone, VE. Seeking a variance from one seventy-four dash three regarding the setback of the sunroom and the addition to the water and wetland. All work needs to conform to the construction requirements for building within an AE flood zone. Okay, comments from? Yeah, Board of Health. Yeah, it says septic inspection performed as required on July twenty-seventh, four floors reviewed, no issues. And then from Conservation, it says twenty-six Cross Tree Way has been approved by Conservation, no issues. I believe, though, they only approved the addition, not the sunroom. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, the sunroom has not been approved by Conservation. They've not gone to Conservation on the sunroom.
You plan on it?
Because it was added in, the Haydens were planning on constructing a sunroom sometime within the next two years. I was trying to send them some money and time to get approved. The risk is very low because it's already an existing structure. They are not changing the footprint or changing anything there, so I included that in.
What do you think?
Because of the low risk.
So, once again, you got a clock that ticks on a variance.
Right. Variance, what is it, two-year?
Two-years, yeah.
So, if we, if we were to-
And we can't approve one without the other, the way it's written.
No.
It's written as both of them. Are you correct?
Okay, I think, I think we can, if we, if we are to prove, approve them, we approve them both and condition it on the Conservation reviewing the sunroom.
The board can put any conditions they feel appropriate.
But were your plans to go to Conservation before you built the proposed addition?
Before the, the sunroom, you mean?
For the, no, but, no, if we condition, before you build your proposed addition, are you gonna go and get your future sunroom approved by Conservation?
Probably not.
There is no possibility in any circumstance, the sunroom will be constructed in any way without the approval of the Conservation Commission.
And just for the record, your name.
My name is John Hayden. I'm a, I'm a retired professional engineer licensed in thirty-seven states.
The owner of the property.
There is also no intention to build the sunroom this year. And when your chairman visited the house yesterday, I told him that if you wanted to withdraw this portion of our application, that we would happily agree to do so. But I understand from the building commissioner that they are welded together, in which case I would be happy to accept any condition you apply to the sunroom. There will be no construction this year, and there would have to be our presence before the Conservation Commission before that would happen.
So, your intention is to build the addition, proposed addition first?
It is an extension to our bedroom. We are, we are asking your approval because we are going to become twelve-month residents here, and the house is simply unsuitable for twelve months there. We are renovating heat, a bunch of other things, and we're doing a renovation to that entire master bedroom, which we are asking for that addition.
So, the question I have is, I know a variance is a start, if he built, I presume, if he's built the proposed addition, it would be a start to the variance, and he would then be protected timing-wise. But what about a written finding?
A written finding is a unique creature-
And there's no lapse on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
It doesn't cover the forty-eight.
So, there's no real lapsing of a written finding. It's just a finding that it's less, it's no more detrimental, da-da-da. So, if we made a decision and conditioned it upon him going to Conservation for that, and he started the proposed addition, he would then lock in his variance in perpetuity. Because he started part of the variance. Am I correct?
If it's all together, correct.
Right.
That's the question.
Well, if, I'm relying on his answer, and I, I concur with his answer, so we could condition-
I'm looking at the back of the room. There's some question on that, but-
Why was his head shaking sideways instead of up and down?
Well, we don't know. I, I don't know the answer to it.
My take would be that if you have both of them involved, and he acts on whatever part, that's all the law requires.
Exactly.
Did the work start?
He started.
He started. He put the foundation for one and not the other, then, and I believe in the eyes of the law, he has initiated the variance.
Makes sense. My point is that we could condition this. It's sounding to me he may not build this year, next year, whatever, and he would not have to come back to this board. If he starts the proposed addition in a timely fashion, he then would be able to build his future sunroom after getting Conservation approval, two, three years from now.
Does he need the Conservation approval within a certain period of time?
He's gonna need the Conservation approval for whatever part of this project doesn't have it.
Right.
When he starts that part?
Yeah, but is there a time limit on this?
Well, there is, because he hasn't applied.
And you have Conservation appro, you have Conservation approval for the proposed addition?
Yes, sir, yeah.
So, he could go start the proposed addition, which would mean the variance would then be, you know-
Well, it's not a variance.
It's a variance.
Thought it was a-
No, wetland setback variance. So, that part of the variance would be then-
Acted upon.
Acted, and then he protects the variance issuance, and a written finding has no shelf life.
Correct.
He doesn't have to come back here. If he goes and then builds his future sunroom and first gets Conservation approval, he doesn't have to come back here three years from now.
No.
Correct.
My point.
Conservation approval is good for three years also, too.
But even if he goes for the future sunroom four years from now and gets Conservation first, because that would be conditioned, and then he builds the future, he's already acted on the variance by going and building the proposed addition?
Correct.
So, he's exercised the variance.
It's my, it's my take, too.
No, I'm not disagreeing.
Are you concurring?
I'm agreeing. I'm just trying to, to understand, is this a change of philosophy now?
I think the change of philosophy may be little bit here in that we're not asking an applicant to obtain all of their approvals before they come to this.
And he has already stated that he'll withdraw.
Yeah, I, and I'm, and, and I think that from one member speaking-
If this was going closer to the wetlands, that'd be one thing.
Right.
This is not.
I just wanna make one-
You're not selling me. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, so I-
I don't even have a vote.
Why'd you bring it up? I know, I know, I'm just being-
You guys bring it up.
I know, and I agree with you, and I, I had the same thinking on the last applicant, not the one before that, because the last applicant, I wasn't sitting here, but I had the same issue in reference to us making some guidelines here that says, obtain all permits before you come here.
Right.
So, I understand where you're coming from. But I also understand what-
I don't vote, whatever you all do, but, you know, but cutting to the chase, as far as I'm concerned, my understanding of the law, and, and I don't have a law degree, but well, what I've been trained in is the fact that if they act upon the variance, and say he had a variance for three additions, that's building one or two. That third one is alive and kicking because he's acted.
Okay. I think we can talk about it.
Mm-hmm. I have no problem with it.
Just condition the, condition the sunroom on construction, the sunroom can't-
They shouldn't have written on that, sorry.
Can't begin until-
Can't start, can't get a building permit.
Until he gets Conservation approval. With the variance.
Well, that would be the variance, though.
That doesn't, doesn't affect the occupancy permit on that section, does it? Or anything like that? Doesn't affect any of these permits you're gonna issue?
No, they won't. Because technically, it's, it's not like we're talking about a kitchen or a bedroom or, now something used. I mean, the area in question is a-
Sunroom.
Sunroom.
It's a new one. Mm-hmm. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions, and concerns? Seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
Would you like to see written finding first or variance first?
Let's make sure much matters, let's think about this. We'll do the variance first.
Okay, and what amount of, of, is the variance in feet? We haven't really determined that. What is it? It's thirty-eight, so twelve feet? Is that correct? Is that what you're looking for, Steve?
Correct.
Twelve feet. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we issue to John A. and Janet L. Hayden, a variance in the amount of twelve feet, and that's at a location of twenty-six Cross Tree Way, under section one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws, in reference to proximity from water and wetlands to allow for construction of a ten by sixteen addition and a seventeen by nineteen sunroom on property located in R3 zoning district, map one twelve, parcel four, twenty-four, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing, in making the motion, I'd like to make reference to the fact that the applicant has not sought after or obtained Conservation approval on the future sunroom, and prior to application for a building permit, he must seek and obtain Conservation approval.
For the sunroom.
For the sunroom, and I'd like to also make reference to a set of plans, site plan prepared for John Hayden of twenty-six Cross Tree Way, Mashpee, Mass. by J.E. Landers-Carley, P.E. Civil Engineers, PO Box three six four West Falmouth, Mass. ASS number one twelve dash twenty-four, date zero five seven fifteen, scale one inch equals ten, drawn by JDI, job number two four six five, prop sheet one of one, revised oh seven twenty-three fifteen, with a set of plans.
A1 and A2.
A1, A2, drawn by- Catuapay Design LLC of forty-three Brewster Road, Mashpee, Mass. oh two six four nine, phone five oh eight two seven four eleven sixty-six, fax five oh eight five three nine four oh two. It's titled, "New Addition/Remodeling for Hayden Residents, Twenty-Six Cross Tree Way, Mashpee, Mass., scale one quarter inch, quarter inch equals one foot, dated seven twenty-one two thousand fifteen," and it's sheet A1 and sheet A2. So, I covered plans, covered Conservation. We do not have Board of Health issues, or do we have any comments from Board of Health?
Septic-
Septic inspection performed as required on July twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, floor plans reviewed, no issues.
Conservation has approved the bedroom.
Proposed addition only.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
That says my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, would you read the next one, which is the-
Written finding.
Written finding.
Like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to John A. and Janet L. Hayden of twenty-six Cross Tree Way, under section one seventy-four seventeen of the zoning bylaws, allow for construction of a ten by sixteen addition and a seventeen by nineteen sunroom on property located in R3 zoning district, map one twelve, parcel twenty-four, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing the written finding, I would like to also state that the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws, section forty, forty-eight, section six. The plans are, site plan prepared by John Hayden of twenty-six Cross Tree Way, Mashpee, Mass. by J.E. Landers-Carley, P.E. Civil Engineering, PO Box three six four West Falmouth, Mass. ASS one twelve dash twenty-four, dated oh five oh seven fifteen, scale one inch equals ten, drawn by JDI, job number two four six five, prop sheet one of one, revised oh seven twenty-three fifteen. Also-
A1 and A2.
A1, A2, drawn by Catuapay Design LLC, forty-three Brewster Road, Mashpee, Mass. oh two six four nine, phone five oh eight two seven four eleven sixty-six, fax five oh eight five three nine nine four oh two. New addition remodeling for the Hayden residents, twenty-six Cross Way, Cross Tree Way, Mashpee, Mass. Scale one quarter inch equals one foot, dated seven twenty-one two thousand fifteen. Also have to make reference to the sensitivity. It is in a moderate sensitivity area, and the property, most of the property is in AE flood zone, and that needs to be dealt with in reference to time with the building permit application, I presume. And the building, the Board of Health has the same issue, septic inspection performed as required on July twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, floor plan reviewed, no issues. I think I did reference the Conservation issue in reference to the-
I don't think we have to put that in the written finding, do we?
No. All right.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Chairman, thank you, members.
Enjoy the night. This plan's not marked on. Do you? Fire that back, too. And I made a mistake and put a red arrow on this. Sorry, guys. Would a blue arrow be all right? Mm, be better than a red one, probably. I think so. I'm okay with that. Listen, it's, if it wasn't, you know, the same footprint, basically, it would be maybe a little bit different, but I think-
It saves a month.
Yeah, it's just, it doesn't better opposition. I don't think it helps to not move that forward.
Agreed.
So, I don't know where that goes, really. We do not have a motion in reference to this property, correct? Hey, Mary Ann? And I'm okay with that. I just, just wanna make sure I didn't miss it. What was the reasoning?
Is that enough? Need another set of notes?
What is the reference? What is the reference?
Yeah, we want that. I'll stamp this down. Just, uh-
Didn't watch Buildable on top.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, 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 what? Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, that's that.
This came in front of us already?
We got everything? We all set there? All right, uh, let's see. Scott, would you read the next new hearing?
Twenty-one Deborah Bottle Road. Owners Christopher L. and Mary E. Winslow request a variance under Section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws for relief from the frontage and lot size requirements to deem lot buildable on property located in our five zoning district, map seventy-one, parcel eighty-nine, dash, zero, dash, R., Mashpee, Mass.
Good morning, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Kevin Corrane, with the local firm's, I think Corrane, McMichael and Donner, and I'm pleased to have this opportunity to represent the Winslos in connection with this variance request that is before for this evening. Mr. Alan Winslow is with me this evening as well, who is a previous owner of the lot and a member of the Winslow family, which was the family which owned this land for many years before it was sold and subdivided. Just to give the Board a little bit of history, and I have provided the Board with a copy of the subdivision plan, a copy of the assessors' map, a copy of various deeds that relate to the title to this lot, as well as the adjacent lot, uh, and I've been doing this a long time, and this is the first time I've come across one of these situations where there is a variety of circumstances where a lot would ordinarily be considered to be buildable, but due to these various unusual, what I would call, circumstances coming together, the lot is deemed to be not buildable at present time, and I'll try to give you a little bit of background on that. The property was subdivided between nineteen eighty-five and nineteen eighty-six. During, during the period when there was a good deal of development taking place not only on the Cape and in the town of Mashpee, but the preliminary subdivision plan was filed when the zoning for this section of Mashpee called for fifteen thousand square foot lots. Between the time that the preliminary subdivision plan was filed, and I believe November of nineteen eighty-five, and the time the definitive plan was approved by the Mashpee Planning Board, which was in April of nineteen ninety-six, the zoning changed from fifteen thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet. And ordinarily, under Forty-Eighth, Section Six, one of the criteria, and I'll point out one other thing, when the lot was, uh, when the property was sold by the Winslos, it was sold as one large parcel of land, then the subdivision, and within a year of the, uh, development of the subdivision, the approval of the subdivision, Lot Six, which is adjacent to this lot, was sold. So effectively, within a year of the creation of the, this lot, this lot was held separately from any adjoining lot, because the only thing that had joined it, other than Lot Six, was open space. Now, by virtue of various occurrences, the developer, uh, ran upon some hard times. The Winslos had granted a mortgage to the developer, uh, and the Winslos agreed to take back this lot in lieu of a foreclosure of that particular-
Not good.
Mortgage. So, the lot was taken back, uh, in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, but still remained separately owned from the adjacent lot, which had been sold out in nineteen eighty-six, or nineteen eighty-seven. I think there's a deed in here from, uh, John L. Schoenberg, trustee of the Santura Woods Realty Trust, who was the developer. He deeded Lot Number Six to the Selbes in November of nineteen eighty-seven. So, when Lot Six was taken back, uh, by, Lot Five was taken back by the Winslos in nineteen ninety-seven, it was still separately held from Lot Six, which was the adjacent lot. Now, the difficulty is that under Forty-Eighth, Section Six, one of the criteria that has to be established is that at the time of the approval of the subdivision plan and the creation of the lot, the lot had to conform to zoning. Well, it couldn't conform to zoning, because between the time the preliminary plan was filed and the time the definitive plan was approved, the zoning had changed. So no, not only was, now, it was no longer, when it was approved, a fifteen thousand square foot zone, it was a forty thousand square foot zone. Well, Mashpee also has a bylaw which gives a little bit more leeway to lots that are in this situation, uh, and I have referenced that lot, that section of the bylaw, uh, in my, uh, in my written remarks, and it's one-seventy-four, Section Twenty-One, and it does say that lots created by a subdivision plan, which this wa, which this was, may be developed to pursuant to lot size frontage setback regulations applicable to the original approval said of subdivision plan, if within eight years of the endorsement, which was April of nineteen eighty-six. The performance guarantee required under Section Eighty-One U. was released regarding said lot, and said lot became separately owned from all adjacent lots. Well, we know it was separately owned within that eight-year period of time, but when the lot was deeded in lieu of foreclosure back to the Winslos, nobody paid attention to the fact, or everybody overlooked the fact, that the planning board, even though it had released the other lots on Deborah Bottle Road, and had built all the roads within the subdivision, never released this particular lot. You know, if you're not in this game, and you're not cognizant of a lot of these rules, you wouldn't pay any attention to it. Ordinarily, if it were a straight-up sale of this lot, perhaps, if somebody were selling it to a client of mine, and I were representing the bank, and I were looking at it, and I saw that there was a planning board covenant in place, I would go to make sure that the planning co, board covenant had been released, uh, and as I would if I were representing in a bank. But in this case, given the fact that the eight years had already run, you couldn't have even have done it at that point in time, because when they took the lot back in nineteen ninety-seven, the subdivision was nine years old. So, we don't fall under the protections because of these two nuances and two sets of circumstances that exist relative to this particular lot. Uh, I would also point out that this lot is over thirty-one thousand square feet. As you can see from the plan that I have provided, most of the lots in this subdivision are substantially smaller than that thirty-one thousand square feet, and I suspect, although I haven't done, uh, a research of every lot in the development, this may be, if not the last, one of the last, one of the last lots that would be available for development in this particular subdivision. So we are here before the Board this evening, seeking variance from the lot size requirement and from the frontage requirement because of the sets of circumstances that has arisen. I would also point out that since nineteen ninety-seven, when the Winslos took the lot back, they have been paying taxes to the town of Mashpee now for almost twenty years. The lot is assessed at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, so it is assessed as a building lot. I suggest to the Board that, uh, that, uh, you know, hardship technically is created, given what has occurred over all these years, and I would also suggest to the Board that, uh, that in this particular instance, where we, we're probably dealing with the, with the lot, one of the last, if not the last, lot in this entire subdivision that hasn't been developed, uh, that to allow development on this lot, which is larger than most of them in this subdivision, would not constitute a detriment to either the neighborhood or to the town as a whole. And if the Board has any questions, I'll be more than happy to respond.
I had a long conversation with Tom Fadala yesterday.
I'm sure you did.
And he told me that the actual changing of the lot size from fifteen thousand to forty thousand took place on February eleventh of eighty-five. Does that sound right? Do I have that date correct?
I can't understand how it would have been February of eighty-five.
February eleventh, he told me.
Then I, then I don't understand how the plan would have been approved, because my understanding is that a definitive plan has to follow within, I think, eight months.
I thought, I thought Forty-Eighth, Section Six was preliminary. If it's followed within seven months of the applic, at an application for a definitive plan, then you lock zoning in, not the approval of the fini, and ultimately, the definitive plan being approved. So with the dates you've got, you would think that the protection would have been afforded.
Well, he told me it can, it comes down to the date that this lot became separately owned. He said that's the key issue here.
And it became separately owned in nineteen eighty-seven.
Do you have an exact date?
Is the deed-
And that's something you can show us in writing?
I can show you the deed. It's attached to my written remark. It's a deed from-
It is. It's in here.
Let's, let me grab that.
Is it the six-oh-seven-four book, page two-twenty deed?
Yes, correct.
Where are we? What exhibit?
So that is November tenth, nineteen eighty-seven.
That's correct.
Yep.
It's right here.
That's, sorry.
Nineteen eighty-seven, yep.
So what is the date that, that Tom Fadala states it must be in order for it to be in conformity? Go back.
Do you have a date? Says, he says on the date the lot became separately owned from all other land. That's the key date in his mind, and he says he doesn't think it'll be the case here. He says, as the preliminary plan for this subdivision was filed on the afternoon of the town meeting of Feb. eleven eighty-five.
Well, it seems to me he's in agreement with what counsel is saying. That's why counsel's here, that he's lost protection.
Whether it was February of eighty-five, or whether it was between November of eighty-five and April of eighty-six, when the plan was approved, the zoning had changed.
I don't think Kevin's, I think, that's why you're here.
That's correct.
Because he agrees with what Tom's saying.
I, I agree that-
In this instance.
I agree that we don't fall under the grandfather clause without relief.
Without relief.
Right, exactly. So, did Tom go on and say his opinion in reference to relief?
No. It would be easy.
I, yes. It would be easier.
He said we've done such things in the past.
Well, if you remember the divorce situation, that was somewhat-
He also said that if it was challenged by a neighbor, chances out we would outright lose.
Lose, yes.
And I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you at all.
Do we have any positive comments from any neighbors?
No.
Anything in writing? From our butters or anything like that?
Unfortunately, you know, the Winslos haven't actually been there, uh, so I'm not sure they even know any of the neighbors that I've just got.
So, no?
Nobody has contacted me to say they have a problem with it. Nobody's here this evening.
And Mary Ann, no one came in to see you in reference to this application?
And I assumed everything was mailed out per-
Wow.
You mentioned that this lot is as big or bigger than most of the lots.
If you, if you look at that subdivision plan that you've attached-
Here you go, Billy.
As an exhibit, Bill, you can see that most of these lots in here are twenty thousand, you know, twenty thousand or less. I think this is one of the largest lots.
It was thirty thousand plus?
Full lots in the whole subdivision that are over thirty thousand square feet.
That's point seven-three an acre, so this is point seven-one. Is it all uplands?
Uh, it does slope. Uh, I'm not sure whether any of it, to my knowledge, is wetland.
It's very strange.
I do know that the lot slopes from front to back, uh, because I was out there when I took photographs of the cul-de-sac.
Very odd-shaped lot as well.
No question.
Point three-eight.
All right, so I have a question. He also said that regarding the frontage, if you were on a circle, if you were to go back forty feet from each of those sidelines, let's, let's say that this is your lot, even though it's not. It's on a circle. If you go back forty feet, let's say that's forty, let's say that's forty, and if you measure the distance there-
And it's a hundred and fifty feet.
Right.
It would conform.
Is it?
I'm not an engineer. I couldn't make that calculation.
But the thing, but you're asking for relief from frontage and lot size requirement?
That is correct. I also couldn't read the, read the information on the plan to determine what the radius of the, of the curve was, or the arc of the curve was.
If you obtain that relief that you're seeking, you may not be-
I may not need it if, if that is, if that is-
But you may need the one he just spoke of, and you haven't requested it.
No, I have requested. I requested frontage relief, and I requested acreage relief.
But it would help if we knew what the-
What Jonathan is saying, I might not need the frontage relief if there is sufficient width, uh, of that lot, but, uh, without having the lot surveyed and having an engineer, uh, look at that, uh-
So what kind of frontage relief would you be looking for?
It's difficult to say. Um, I believe I gave you the calculations with Mary Ann as, as part of that.
You got it right, yeah.
I think it's almost a hundred and twenty feet now.
There it is.
So, uh, it was, I think-
Having approximately one-twenty, you say?
Thirty-two. I think the request was like for thirty-two feet, I believe.
Thirty-eight.
From what I could read on that plan, uh, I think I said, that's probably a hundred and twelve plus or minus feet, but I could tell whether that was a hundred and twelve or a hundred and eighteen, to be honest.
So your, your lot size you're looking for, yeah, I mean, short on the frontage-
And short on the size.
In short on the size.
Had to be forty thousand and-
Yeah, it has to be eighty thousand now.
Eighty thousand now, yeah. So that's forty-eight thousand, three-oh-nine is the, is the lot, uh, yeah.
Lot size.
Exactly. And the frontage is thirty-eight feet.
And thirty-eight feet frontage.
That's what you've got in the application.
Yeah, see, the frontage, it's, uh, it looks like a hundred and twelve, but it's difficult to read. But if you, it, it looks to me like if you did go back that forty feet because of that shape of the lot, you probably don't need that frontage requirement. But again, I think better safe than sorry from my perspective, that-
Yeah.
If, uh, if it was necessary and we didn't have it, uh, then we'd only be back here again. I mean, because of the shape of that lot, it looks like it's certainly plenty wide where that forty feet is because of the odd shape-
It does.
Of that lot.
I agree.
But I don't, the Mashpee, the Mashpee maps on the scale and the, and the subdivision map that I have is reduced, so it's, so it's difficult to-
So without spending a lot of money doing surveys and-
Right.
But that does look-
So you don't have the original subdivision plan, then?
I do not have the original subdivision. I have a copy of this subdivision plan, but the town would have a copy of the original subdivision plan, and I could go to the Registry of Deeds and see if I could get a full-size copy of that subdivision.
I'm, no. I just don't.
I, I don't know. I, I just don't.
I think I understand where you're at, though. I mean, do you spend more money and, I don't know?
Do you have house plans for this?
We do not have house plans for this, no. If I had house plans, I would have had, I would have had. There's no, doesn't appear to be any need for any kind of variance relief because of the size of the lot, so I don't see a need particularly, and we don't know what's gonna be built or if the lot's gonna be sold, so, uh, we don't have a house, any house plans for it at present.
So really, in, what you're trying to do is make, make it a buildable lot, and then decide what you want to do with it.
See, the other thing, as I look at this assessors' map, I mean, it looks like that dimension on the right-hand side is forty-one feet going back. If we were forty-one feet going back and the setback were forty, your line would have to go from- back and the setback were forty, your line would have to go from, you know, where that break is on the right-hand side of the lot to the long line on the left-hand side of the lot. And that may not be, that may not be a hundred and fifty feet.
It would go from there right over.
Yep.
That's where the break is because that's forty-something feet.
The lot beside it, what is it, lot, is it point five-four acres?
That's correct.
I assume there's a house on there.
There is, and I have a picture of the, it was one of the.
And it looks like there's no lot here. What's this about?
That's open space.
Gotcha. This was never intended to be open space.
I'm sure this lot, no. It's a separate building lot, but this is the house on the lot next door. This is what the end of the cul-de-sac looks like. It's fully developed.
That's the only a butter, isn't it?
Yeah, that is the only a butter, correct. It's surrounded on three sides by open space, which is why that's the only lot we had to research the title in terms of. Which is another, which is another reason.
Is it possible to get something in writing from that neighbor not opposing it?
Well, they get notified. They get twenty days to appeal.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know whether, whether.
What if they need them to notice?
Well, he is.
If he opposes this, it's dead.
Six months or a year and they come back.
But the fact of the matter is he had an opportunity to come here tonight and oppose it, and he hasn't done it. Or he had an opportunity to send an email or a letter like other folks do, and they haven't done it.
But what happens if he's, and I understand where you're coming from, I really do, but what happens if he's gone on safari for the last six months and he comes back and sees this house where he always thought the house was lot was not buildable and was told by the real estate agent when he bought his house that that house will never be built on because it doesn't meet the requirements and all those other things that we hear?
Well.
And I understand we've given the correct notification.
He's had the same notice that everybody else has.
I agree with you. I understand. It's just this is one of those ones where we got to think a little bit out of the box to get there on this one.
He's going to go away for six months. He should have someone check him his mail.
I wouldn't speak, I wouldn't speak.
I don't know. I don't think that's a good argument.
As a general rule, I don't think the board typically requires us to go to a butters that don't show up and ask them, ask them for a letter to, to maybe shake, rattle the trees so they.
No, but this one's a hail Mary.
Maybe we can, maybe we can oppose this now if the board has sent us.
But this one's a hail Mary variance, though. This is one of those.
Anytime you have an undersized lot, you know, and it hasn't been developed yet and isn't, it's a hail Mary variance. There's no question. Anytime.
Well, I, I can't speak for the town, but I would believe that the town's position on this is if, if it were to be approved and it were challenged in the courts, we would take a completely passive defense on this.
The town always takes a passive defense.
But I mean, this would be as passive as you can believe.
That's how it's only been.
And quite frank, and quite frankly, if, if an appeal were filed, my advice to my client might be.
Would be.
Back out of it.
What you can't publicly state would be, see ya. You wouldn't take it, you wouldn't.
How long would they have?
To appeal the decision?
They have the twenty-day appeal period.
That's right.
Right. Then it becomes effective.
Then the clock stops ticking.
Well, they just, there's no clock.
No, it is on the variance until you act on it.
What do you need to act on?
Build.
Why?
Because you have to act on the variance.
You just made it a buildable lot. You weren't asked to build anything. You've just asked to make it a buildable lot. There's nothing to act on.
But if he doesn't pull a building permit, or as I understand, sell the property, which activates it.
Property's already in separate ownership, so that's not an issue.
I don't know.
I don't know.
That's certainly another issue.
Yeah, because you have to act on it within two years.
So Jonathan, did you ask, did you ask?
I don't know what you asked.
Tom, what is?
He's telling us right here anyway. It says here, "The lot in question can only be buildable if the owners can demonstrate that on the date the lot became separately owned from all of the land that the applicable zoning allowed a lot of its size and frontage to be buildable." We know the answer is no.
Yeah, understood.
Which is why we're here.
Can you get around it? Yeah. If it gets challenged, it'll get killed.
Right. Well, it comes down to the question is, does the board want to do something that they know coming out of the gate is probably not?
I mean, the fact of life is that, that probably over sixty percent of the variances that any board appeals might grant probably shouldn't be granted.
Well, not, maybe in this board's case, but there are boards that I've gone in front of that probably zero percent of.
There are boards that won't grant them.
Yeah, so a lot, several boards you walk in front of, they didn't go in there.
No question. But, you know, typically, typically variances, you know.
I mean, I can tell you various committees that I, boards that I go in front of that forget, I mean, a variance on side yards, ninety-nine percent of this lot's size, forget it. Don't even bother.
And, you know, as I said, there, I think that there are extenuating circumstances in this particular situation. I also think the fact that the lot is thirty-one thousand square feet surrounded on three sides by open space just makes it a more palatable determination because it's bigger than everything around it. And essentially, you've got all that open space around it, so you have eighty thousand square feet there that isn't, that is only being developed with one home. And the mere fact that somebody somewhere along the line overlooked the fact that, that there was, you know, a, a planning board covenant that had to have been addressed because that's where I disagree with his opinion. Because within eight years, if that planning board covenant had been released and the lot had been in separate ownership, which it was, I think under that section twenty-one by law, it would have passed muster.
Well, he did talk about the eight years, which would be two eleven ninety-three. Said the zoning freezes in that point.
Correct. And the lot had been sold, the adjacent lot had been sold in eighty-seven, so it was well within that eight-year period of time that the lot had been separated from its adjoining building lots. So this is not a situation where you have people that have one, two, or three adjacent lots all under the same ownership and they're trying to make three buildable lots. What we're dealing with here is a lot that has existed since nineteen eighty-six when the plan was approved by the planning board. Taxes have been paid on it since nineteen eighty-six when the plan was approved by the planning board and through no fault of their own, because as I say, unless you're familiar with how all this works, you wouldn't even give a, give a thought to a, to a planning board covenant or the fact that a planning board covenant hadn't been released because the road was built and there were houses on the street.
Right.
So he's owned this lot then for how many years?
My client has owned it since nineteen ninety-seven.
And he plans to sell it, I assume?
I believe it, it will be, it will be sold. I have a deed which shows you when the lot was deeded to. Copy that deed is in here.
So your client has owned it for eight years?
Well, now his son and his granddaughter own it.
Right.
But it was deeded in lieu of foreclosure to Alan A. Winslow and Christopher, I believe. And Christopher Winslow as joint tenants. Alan sold his interest to his granddaughter and Christopher is still in an honorably lot with the granddaughter.
That's a tough one. No, he said we could.
Then it is your answer. World of Dice poisoner.
I don't know. I just, I get concerned.
Should we continue this and think about it?
Yes, yes. I'd like to have a conversation about it.
I want to have a conversation with town council.
Yes, yes.
Kevin, we'd like to continue this. What's it going to change? What are you going to think of it?
I think you're going to ask town council what are the risks.
What are the risks to us?
Risks to approve or deny. The risk both ways, I think.
I mean, I just heard that the town council won't defend, and I understand that completely. Ben there done that. But town council still has to file an appearance. He has to do certain things. So what are we putting ourselves in, you know, monetarily for the community if in fact we approve this? Even though we know he won't defend it, he still has to file an appearance, do some, he has to do certain things. I mean, I'd like to look at all that to see what we're putting the town into.
If they, if we say it's not buildable, why do they have to pay taxes on it? It's a buildable lot for all these years.
It's a buildable lot for the last ten years.
Yeah, but assessors will tax. Everything is buildable. And I can say you pay the tax and you look for an abatement.
If this gets denied, you can go back and say, hey, this wasn't a buildable lot.
I think you could, I think you could.
That'd be much easier for the lot. You can get it back retroactively.
How far you can go back?
You have to talk to the assessors on that. There's probably a portion, I don't know how far. It's, it's up to them on that end.
Honestly, I'd be comfortable continuing this and, and talking to town council.
That's your call.
I don't know about you guys.
Because I don't know what you, what are you going to gain?
I concur a hundred percent.
What are you going to gain?
Just, I, I want to have a conversation.
I think what we gain is him saying, this is what will happen legally, this is what will happen.
And I would like to know when you talk to him.
I have no problem making that available.
These are the risks.
If we don't defend.
These are the risks.
What's the expense for him to just file? He, he needs to file an answer. He needs to do, he just can't not defend.
You do?
I know that neighborhood.
I mean, he has to do certain things, so.
Oh, I thought you knew that.
No, 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 no. Neighborhood.
I saw you yawing. You can go to sleep.
I can't imagine that first. I don't know if I'm going to go next time.
All right, what, what if we make a motion to continue, see how that goes?
I'm sorry.
See if we want to continue it or not. I'll make a motion that we continue it until after we speak with town council. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ron, how do you vote?
Aye, in favor.
I vote in favor. Bill?
Yes.
No.
And Don?
No.
So what's the answer? It's three to two. Does it have to be four?
I would say probably not.
No. Not for a continuance, I don't think.
Positive vote on a variance needs four.
Yeah, but you know what, Kevin? Even if it doesn't, you're probably better asking for an extension because there's probably going to be your vote anyway, correct?
True.
There you go.
But I mean, I, town council is probably not going to give you any different answer than you got from Tom LaF.
That's what I was just told.
But you know what, Kevin? Here's a question I have. I understand he's not going to defend anything, but is he going to file an appearance? Does he spend any dollar of the town's money? Not a penny?
They don't. Typically, they, they don't file an appearance in the case.
I just need to, I need to know.
Just because they have to file an appearance.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I'll tell you the way it works generally, because I've been involved in several of them over the years. The suit is filed. In fact, I, I'm involved in one right now. You know, Pat Costello called up and said, you know, you're on your own.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's the way, that's the way towns deal with these.
And I assume.
When it's a butter versus a butt. It's a different story when it's, when it's, you know.
Versus the town.
For example, if you were, if you were to deny or have denied the permit tonight on the marijuana scenario, he would have come in and he would have defended the town and the board because the board made the decision. But when it's a butter vis a vis in a butter, they say, okay, you guys.
You guys fight it out.
But I, in my own mind.
So if we were to approve this tonight and the neighbor next door said, uh-uh, he'd be suing the town, wouldn't he?
He would sue the town, yes.
Yeah.
He wouldn't be suing the neighbor.
No, and the town would probably.
Neighbor would be a defendant in the case. The neighbor has to be named as a defendant in the case.
Right, so he'd be suing the town.
But the sound gets brought in because the board is the one that makes the decision. He's appealing your decision. I mean, this is not new news.
So it's going to cost the town.
You guys have been around here long enough to know that this isn't new news.
No.
When you, when the suit is brought, you know that the board is named as a party to the suit.
Right, and generally.
I understand that, but as you said, we take a passive defense when it's neighbor against neighbor.
This would be neighbor against neighbor.
This would be neighbor against neighbor and we would sit there and say, Kevin, defend your client.
But there's still some questions that I've got in my mind. I really, there's.
This would be neighbor against neighbor. If you had a neighbor appealing the grant of the variance, they would leave it up to us to defend.
And they'd name us too, but we would sit and say.
Be named, but they would leave it up to us to defend because it's one neighbor who's appealing a decision that another neighbor has the ability to build on a lot.
Which presumably Kevin would probably not defend because he'd say, and I can't speak for Kevin, but he'd say to his clients, look at, you're not going to win. You're going to spend money foolishly here. That's probably what would happen. But still, I, I mean, there's three or four other questions that pop open in my mind that I'd like to write down and you could ask Pat.
And when you ask Pat, I would make it clear to Pat that nobody came here this evening to oppose this.
That's what I'm, yeah, I totally agree. He sent the letter out, wasn't he?
I'm not necessarily opposed to this.
I'm not at all.
I'm just not sure what. Man, I'm just looking for guidance.
I can understand. I can understand.
You know, and I, I appreciate that it's a thirty-one thousand square foot lot.
You were upfront.
I'm trying to be upfront about it, you know. I'm not, I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes here.
I, I don't want to see this thing go for, the, the thing I want to try, try to avoid tonight is I don't want to see it go forward tonight and be denied. I'd rather have at least the option of finding out from town council, just some background. And I'm, I'm not sure, but my guess is it might not be approved tonight if, if there was a vote, if there was a motion to approve it. I'm not sure it would pass.
I don't disagree.
So, we need to talk to the town council, and I don't know when he's coming back.
Just don't bring him back on the same night that I'm here and I have to go to the end of the agenda to accommodate him.
Don't you get paid by the hour?
Uh, no.
Oh, by that job!
So can we determine a date once we find out? It might be, might be four weeks.
Get a meeting again. I'm back here on, I'm back here on September.
Next one is the scheduled, one is the ninth.
But the question is, is when town council.
When is town council coming back?
Oh, I don't know that.
I'm back on the ninth.
I think it's probably going to be after that.
You can communicate with him by email.
I don't have permission.
I don't make that choice. Oh, no.
Somebody above us makes those decisions.
Above my pay grade. So all those go with?
So you have to wait for him to come back here? Sometimes you don't see him for six months.
Comes every month.
Oh, he comes every month?
Every month. He came today.
I, I, I think we can get, we need to request approval to talk to him. We don't necessarily have to have a meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah. We can, I can send him an email. Well, not him, but the selectman's office.
Correct.
I would like to put a couple of questions together for you.
Right.
If I may.
Why don't we shoot, everybody that has questions, shoot them into Marion, who can put it together?
So do you want to set up some type of?
What's the next meeting?
September ninth.
Is that, is that too quick?
I don't know.
I will not be here on the ninth.
That's all right. We'll have five.
No, but there's no meeting on the twenty-third.
I'm sure Ron's going to be here, too.
Why is there no meeting on the twenty-third? I didn't.
It says holiday.
It's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
I don't know what the holiday is.
I think we should shoot for the ninth because otherwise we're into the middle of October.
Oh, not supposed to hold.
Could be Yom Kippur or.
You think I'd know? Another clue. It's early this year. It seems early. Usually it's later in September, early October.
This thing would be a Jewish name. Well, the twenty-third.
Sir, did you have a question, comment? Come right up. Come right up. Grab the mic.
Is it too late for me to ask a question?
No.
Not at all. Just state your name for the record if you would.
Just one question.
You are?
Alan Winslow.
Okay.
And the father of Christopher Winslow.
Okay.
And the grandfather of Mary Elizabeth Winslow. And the son of George Winslow, who died in eighteen, nineteen eighty-nine. So a lot of things have happened after his death. He couldn't anticipate them. I live in Florida. Mary Elizabeth lives in Washington. Christopher lives in Connecticut. Kevin, you live in Mashpee.
Close enough.
My question is this. If it is decided that this is, this lot, which admittedly is wider than most of the lots, is larger than all but maybe two other lots in a hundred or so, if it is deemed not buildable, what is it?
What is it?
Unbuildable.
An unbuildable lot.
How do you test?
That's an assessor's question, not a zoning board question.
The assessor had put a value of one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars on it, and that bill was paid each and every year.
I know.
That's a conversation we will also have with the town attorney.
No, that's good points.
I think that's, I think that's the question that needs to be answered.
It's an excellent point.
If it isn't...
I think it's a very good question.
I think you've been paying taxes on something you shouldn't have been paying taxes on.
If you're paying taxes as though it was a buildable lot and now you're told that it's not, that's a very good question, why? Those will be issues that we'll bring up, and those are kinds of things we'd like a continuance on so that we can clear those up with town council and make sure that we're doing the right things here.
I thank you, and I...
Thank you.
I wish you Godspeed.
Thank you very much.
It probably wouldn't hurt if you're, if you're inclined to want to do it, to provide Pat with a copy of what I have provided you with.
Absolutely.
So he can see the history of what has occurred here and why this lot fell through the proverbial...
Have it right here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Do we need to vote on a continuance? Make a motion that we continue until September ninth? Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Dom?
I approve.
Are you opposed?
No, I do not oppose.
So it's four to one to continue it.
You can take that, you know.
Thank you.
I'm gonna approve. I'm gonna ask those questions anyways.
What would happen if we couldn't continue it?
We continued it.
Yeah. Just continue it. Talk to town council. All right, yeah, let's...
What other thing we have? I thought we were done.
If that was me, we had a whole day to...
Scott, would you read the other business?
I wouldn't want to say shut up. No, I can't. I put it away.
Bill, would you read the other business?
Yes. Other business approved, July twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, meeting minutes. Make a motion that we do so.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dom, would you like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
You may vote.